City Council meeting for Monday, April 18th, 2022. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:01. Will you please join and stand and join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. Welcome. Welcome, welcome. We've got a full agenda tonight, so we're going to get moving right along here. With that, Elise, we call roll, please.
Councilmember Hatfield?
Here.
Councilmember Hubbard?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Gra?
Here.
Mayor Wenshaw?
Here. Moves this to item four, adopting the agenda. Corrections or additions to the agenda? If not, entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield, adopting the agenda. Discussion. Hearing done. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Moves us to item five, visitor presentation. Is there anyone here that wants to speak under visitor presentation? That's not an item on tonight's agenda. Last call. Kevin, anybody in virtual world? Okay. All right. We'll move on to item six, approving previous meeting minutes. Again, if there are no corrections or additions, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Gra.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard, approving April 4th, 2022 city council minutes. Discussion. Hearing done. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Moves us to item seven, consent agenda items, which are items that need our approval, but not necessarily conversation, but any and all may be pulled out and talked about. With that, is there any conversation, corrections, or additions on consent?
Do you have a question regarding 7F? Just, it's not usual that we see preliminary site plans in consent. So I just was kind of looking for the background information on how that ended up in preliminary, excuse me, in consent.
Yep, real quick.
There's just the number of items that we had on tonight. We thought, we tried to move one on to consent primarily because there was no discussion on this one. There's no change in the application from the one that you guys have seen already. There was one issue that was outstanding as far as working with an adjacent neighbor on some issues, which has been resolved. So really, it's, it's no change and there was real no discussion on it.
And the screening with the concerns with like the parking lot and traffic? We looked at that, was addressed in the concept plan? Because there's concerns, right? With, as they're leaving, it would go into the houses?
That, that was the item that came out of the concept review. And South West Christian, to their credit, was very good about working with that neighbor. And we've heard from, from both sides that they both feel comfortable with the direction that it's going.
Okay.
And I'm sure that if, that's still one that can be worked on. The, the construction isn't going to affect that. That can be done at any point, the screening, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
But I think that the plan really shows something people are comfortable with.
Right.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. Perfect. All right. Anyone else have any questions on a consent? Entertain, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Discussion. Hearing done. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Moves us to item eight, adopt resolution 2022-49, which is a public hearing, the 2022 downtown street reconstruction assessment hearing.
Mayor and councilmembers, this is an item that we've been talking about for the last several weeks with different items, including improvement hearing and calling for the actual plans. The last step in the process before we actually move forward with this year's plan is to actually go through the assessment hearing. As you will remember, at the last meeting that we talked about this, we have, had shared with the neighbors in the neighborhood meeting already, the assessment amount that was being proposed for this project, which is $7,500 for the single-family residences, which is consistent with what we've seen throughout the rest of the downtown street reconstruction projects that we've seen throughout the downtown. There was some properties along Sixth Street that had already received sewer service. When, they were new houses that were built back, I don't know, about 15 years ago or so. And so those would get a reduction in assessment, down to $6,000 to give them a credit for that sewer work that had already been done and they had already paid for. And then there's some commercial properties that were determined based on looking at, doing a consultation with our appraiser to determine what valuation should be associated with that. And it's really looking at what benefit, economic benefit, does the property receive from actually receiving that assessment? Tonight's, tonight is a public hearing. I'll turn it over to Matt Clark if he has any details. There is, as part of this public hearing process, this is the opportunity for anybody if they have an appeal, for them, that they have to provide written notice or speak to the council at this meeting to preserve their option to appeal. It doesn't mean that they have to, it just preserves their option to. We do have one property owner that has reached out to us about it. As he, as Matt talks about, you'll see, it may not be an appeal as much as, as maybe a deferral based on circumstances, but that's some of the details we can work through after the meeting. We just received it just a couple of days ago. We can work through afterwards with the property owner to, to determine exactly where they, they fall. But I'll turn it over to Matt to talk maybe about some of those details.
Yeah, I think, real briefly, the property-
Matt, you're going to have to get a mic or-
Real briefly, the property that we did hear back from was at 505 East Sixth Street. And again, as Matt alluded to, it's, it's really just following the process that the city has had in place for a number of times. Folks who do have questions on the assessments, this is not uncommon for us to get questions, concerns. We have not had a chance, like Matt said, they reached out to us, I think it was late last week. Matter of fact, I was out on Friday. But we, I did, I did have a conversation with them today. They would just like it to be on record with the city that because they're not here this evening, they had a family event that they had to be out of town for. Typically, the process requires that they are here in person to make that formal contest. Staff is basically taking the liberty of being here for them to make that at least on record. We've had that in the past where we've had, taken some liberties to just make sure when, when these types of circumstances come up, that they are at least put on notice. I do have the, the formal appeal and the assessment in front of me. I did not print that. I will share it with you guys if you'd like to see it. It needs to be held with the city clerk. So Matt Poteraski has, he is city clerk in this case, so it just simply preserves their option in the future. The, the city's process for deferrals with assessments, we need to delve into that a little bit deeper with the property owner. There's income relationships that happen. There's also hardships. There's also foreign, or for veterans and disability pieces that fall into that for how our policy is set up. And so just understanding what their situation is, how they may fit into the, the criteria, or if that's something that they want to pursue with their, if, if a deferment is gone forward with. So that's a little background on 505 East Sixth Street. That is the only one that we've received for questions on the assessment. Council's aware, we've had multiple neighborhood meetings stepping out in front of this project. The next process for us would really be receiving bids, assuming the council moves forward that, and the bids are in good shape. We would then start to schedule those neighborhood meetings, meeting with folks in the field once we have more of a construction schedule and those types of things in the future. So more to come. This is just kind of that next step in the process. We do have kind of that tentative May-June start date for when the project would really be kicked off, assuming we get good bids and things fall into place. So that being said, I think the council's pretty well versed in what we, what I shared in the council packet. In your, in your packet, there was the overall assessments exhibit that we do every year. It gives the amounts of what those assessments are. Important thing that needs to be disclosed at the meeting is that the terms of which the assessments are being levied. So as standard practice in downtown is the assessments are levied over a 15-year term, 5.5% interest, amortized over 15 years. The, the terms of the assessment allow for folks to prepay within the first 30 days of when the, the assessments are adopted. After that 30-day period, call it the grace period, interest starts accruing at that amortized rate until November 15th. At November 15th, that's when the city goes through and certifies the assessments with the county. Essentially, they're on hold at the county and then tax, it would then go forward in taxes payable for 2023. So if the assessments aren't paid, they just simply defer on to the property taxes and get amortized over that 15-year term. So that is, I think that's what I got.
Is that why they can't do a partial prepayment?
Correct. We do not do partial, partial payments. It's a full payment. It's a very, very tricky process with our accounting to do partial payments just solely for how we have to certify and reducing that assessment of the interest rate amounts over geometry. And so it's a, it's a good point. We do only offer the full pay.
Okay. I figured.
Yeah.
Figured it out, so.
All right. Same processes every year, though. So it's the exact, exact same assessment amounts, exact same process.
And that amount's been the same since when it's-
2010.
And I, I pointed it out just because I think it's important to understand that we've kept it the same since 2010, and that's now 2022, 12 years. Currently is, obviously right now, construction costs, labor costs, everything more expensive, and we still didn't change it. So I, I appreciate that because it continues to, to be fair, I know-
But I think it's one of them that if we didn't, can you imagine what it would be like when we're at this end?
Yep.
And then how, why did you start where you started and not?
Yep.
I mean, some of the, a lot of this has been based on which way the sewer lines need to go. So that's how the whole staging processes work. But as residents, that might not agree to them if we didn't do something like that.
Yep.
We've always talked about being fair and equitable about things, and I think they've done a good job on this, and people have seen the rewards at the end. I think that's the most important.
I think it is a fair point as we get into future years because, you know, construction costs will go up and, but I, I think we've always viewed the downtown as one construction project that we just had to do over multiple years.
There's no way we could have done the whole-
Agreed. I just, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no.
Because it's, it's, I think it's, it's important to note that we've been consistent with that since 2010.
You know, exactly. You know, where the first, first two years we had this, this room was filled every time and people weren't happy about it. Now this one, we had people asking, well, I haven't really been there sooner. So you can tell that how it's changed as people see how, how effective and what it looks like when it's done, so. Pretty awesome. All right. Anyone else? Any questions for Matt? Matt? Or Matt? Or me, Nate? Anyone? Elise? All right. With that, this is a public hearing, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing at 7:16. It just flipped. Is there anyone that would like to speak on behalf of the downtown street reconstruction assessment hearing? And again, I will just note that we have a, a letter from 505 East Sixth Street that will be put in as part of our records. So, all right, last call. All right. We will move ahead to 7:17 and close the public hearing at this point with, if there are no other questions from council, I'd entertain a motion to approve resolution 2022-49. 2022-49.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Again, that's 2022-49, 2022 street reconstruction assessment hearing, downtown street. Discussion. We've been, it sounds like we're going through this fast, but we've seen this presentation multiple, multiple times, so, and over the years, many times. So it's the same, same process, so. All right. With that, last call. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Moves us to 8B, adopt resolution 2022-47. This again is a public hearing to consider certification of spring 2022 delinquent utilities.
Mayor and councilmen, the item in front of you tonight is one that we used to do just once a year, but I think it was right at the beginning of the year, or maybe it was the end of the last year. We talked about moving this to having this at least twice a year, that we'd have this come back so it was in smaller chunks. But we do have, having utility accounts, we do have people who sometimes have delinquent bills that they have not paid. And so one of the things that, that we do if they are unpaid and continue to remain unpaid is to assess those fees against the property. And that can be anything from unpaid, you know, so sometimes we have to go out and mow properties that are unmaintained, so unpaid mowing fees, alarm fees, connection fees. You know, it can be those types of fees or anything that have just been left undone. You will see that there's a total of just under $25,000 for this spring period, which comes from stormwater, electric sewer water fees for utilities. And that since the time that we, those were the notices that we sent out to people, since the time we, we have been able to bring those down to $10,500, so almost cut those in half. So the remaining amount of that $10,500 is what remains unpaid after we provided people notice of paying these delinquent accounts. So this is a public hearing. People were provided notice of this and given a time to remedy it. Staff is recommending that we certify these for taxes payable 2023, so not until next year, and that they be certified for a period of one year at a 5% interest, including the 1.5% special assessment administrative fee.
Good. So nothing, I mean, if they don't, if they do nothing, nothing changes? It just goes on their taxes and then they'll be assessed in the 2020s?
And it'll be part of their tax payment for next year.
Is that part of one of the special things that you see on your tax statement?
Well, it actually shows up exactly what it is-
Okay.
-on there, so it'll actually list out exactly what it is. And, and the benefit of putting it on taxes is you can't, that stays with the property.
Right.
And, you know, if people don't pay property taxes, that can become a tax forfeited property.
Does this appear on like their credit report or credit rating?
I, I think it probably could for unpaid bills, you know, because this is, you know, not unlike if somebody's a customer of Excel or, or CenterPoint. If they were to, you know, get information for credit reports, it could be on their credit report. To me, the importance of this is how we make sure that the people who do pay their bills in Chaska that we're being consistent to make sure that, that everybody's treated fairly.
Any other questions for Matt before we open the public hearing? All right. Hearing done. So we'll go ahead and open the public hearing at 7:21. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on a certification of delinquent utilities? Kevin, anybody on virtual world? Okay. Last call. All right. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:22. At this point, if there are no further questions, I'd, I'd entertain a motion to adopt resolution 2022-47, certification of spring 2022 delinquent utilities.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gra, second by Councilmember Hatfield. Discussion. Hearing done. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. All right. We move to 8C, adopt resolution 2022-41 and ordinance 1014, approving the preliminary site and building plan, preliminary plat and rezoning for Cantissimo.
Mayor and councilmen, this is an item that you have seen before through the concept plan. This is a 32, proposal for a 32-unit assisted living and memory care facility that would be at the southeast corner of Huntermark Road and Pioneer Trail. So this is directly to the east of the Supertarget and Wings parking lot, just north of the Pioneer Point development. This is one that went through the planning commission with recommendation for approval, and Liz is here to give a presentation on this.
Thank you, Matt. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. I'm gonna, for my, share my screen here. So we have a preliminary site and building plan, preliminary plat and rezoning request this evening for the project known as Cantissimo of Chaska, which is a memory care and assisted living facility being proposed by Anasazi Holdings. Just to give you a refresher of the planning process, it is a three-step process, starting with concept, moving into preliminary, and finaling out with final. At this point in the project, we are at preliminary, so this is more of the technical analysis and code-specific review of the project, kind of responding to what was heard during the, the concept plan review. As Matt mentioned, the site is in the southeast quadrant of the intersection of Huntermark Road and Pioneer Trail. It is a triangular piece that directly abuts the Pioneer Point residential development on its northern side. You have Hazelton Golf Course just across the street. You have Wings Financial and Supertarget directly west across Huntermark Road. And then you have the Chaska Commons Commercial Area kitty-cornered to this parcel. So in terms of previous approvals on this site, it was back in 2000 when the Pioneer Point development was approved. So it's been some time since this area has seen some movement. But back in March of 2019, the first concept plan came through for a, a different project known as Hazelview, which is a, was a senior cooperative building, which totaled 37 units and four stories in height. And that did not move forward. So we did receive a new concept plan for a different project back in April of 2021 for the Cantissimo project being proposed this evening. Just a couple analysis of the site. The site itself is approximately three acres in size. It's a triangular shape, so it definitely poses some challenges in, in terms of fitting a, a site plan within it. So it tapers off towards the eastern side. It is a vacant parcel. There is a scattering of trees throughout the site, as well as two public trails that dissect both the westerly side and northerly side of the site. The northerly trail will be realigned with this project, which you'll see in later plans. So what they're requesting is a preliminary site and building plan and a preliminary plat approval for the construction of a new memory care and assisted living facility. It'll total 32 dwelling units within that, have a building footprint of 22,000 square feet approximately, and then one story in height. The second part of the request is for rezoning to a planned residential district number 83. So just want to note some of the more significant changes that have occurred since concept plan approval. The biggest comment during concept plan was the location of the driveway access into the site. Due to where the property lines fall, they don't get direct access from Supertarget's access onto Huntermark Road. So they explored a couple options. They finally have come to a consensus with the Pioneer Point Development to the south to be able to obtain an easement from them, to be able to get their driveway across their land and line up completely with the Supertarget's access. So that was a, a huge comment in order for the traffic movement to work on this site, as well as the neighboring sites and street systems. So they have addressed that, that biggest concern. Tree preservation was also a big topic since there are a scattering of trees on this site. We did go through an analysis all the way, dating all the way back to the Hazelview concept, where we did circle several tree clusters that were significant on the site, which contained oaks and maples. So those were kind of the focal areas that we advised the developer to focus on in terms of trying to preserve. So there are a total within the red-circled areas, 35 trees that we dubbed as kind of the most high priority areas. And just to give you a comparison, Hazelview, when they came through, they were showing to preserve 25 of those 35 trees. And now with the new Cantissimo project, which is a, a smaller scaled project compared, is able to preserve 28 of those trees. The one exception area, which was advised by our Public Works Department, was to realign this trail to be closer to Pioneer Trail. So with that, there will be a couple trees that will be impacted as a result of that realignment. However, those will be mainly box elders and cottonwoods that will be affected, so not something that we considered prime trees. This is the proposed site plan being shown on this slide here. The primary point, the access point, as you can see, lines up with Supertarget just to the west there, which would provide the only access into the site. That will gain access to the parking lot, which is oriented on the southern portion of the site with the building just north of that. They're proposing a 24-stall parking lot, which more than adequately meets the needs of this facility. The people who will be living here are seniors needing assistance primarily, so they will not have their own cars. So really, the parking lot is, is mainly for the employees and for guests who come. The building is also intentionally designed in terms of its shape. One of the concerns out of the concept plans that have been approved on this site is maintaining the site intersection or site triangle along Huntermark and Pioneer Trail. So they've angled the building to capture that sightline and keep that open. One of the requests this evening is to receive a, or ask for a variance from the centerline setback that's required from Pioneer Trail. It requires 125 feet from the centerline, and they're requesting to deviate to 100 feet from the center, centerline. The reasons for this are due, mostly in part due to the shape of the lot. There's only really the westerly portion that can be developed as a result of the shape of the lot. Another big component is the tree preservation on the site, being able to save those focal areas. The orientation of the parking lot in the building were intentionally set so that tree preservation could occur at its most optimal status. I'll show a different exhibit where the parking lot in the building could be flipped in terms of meeting the setbacks, but the result of that is the loss of more trees. So the primary reasoning for this layout is from a tree preservation perspective and an overall impact to the, to the site from a pavement perspective.
Do we have the ability, seeing as it's a county road, to give that? Or does the county have to do that?
We have the ability to do that.
We do have the ability?
That's the setback that we set. Yep. Yep. With this abutting, the northern side of Pioneer Point, there were some concerns with the screening capabilities on the southern side of the site. So they are showing a layer of plantings along this edge, but also a six-foot privacy fence that was requested from the neighboring development. So they are showing that for the full extent of the parking lot, as well as wrapping around where that driveway access is being shown. as well as wrapping around where that driveway access is being shown. So getting back to that flip-flopped site plan layout, it's a little faint on, on this exhibit here, but it, the access point has to stay where it is. That's basically defined by the traffic study and where the city and county need that access to be for traffic to work. So as a result of that, the driveway would come around the building and the parking lot would be just to the north of the building, with the building oriented on the southern side. So as a result of that, the driveway impacts that cluster of trees that were normally shown as saved, saved, as well as getting the building to fit into that setback would result in the loss of additional trees on the southern portion as well. This is just more of a zoomed-out overview of the building compared to kind of the street system out there. So one of the things they'll have to do with the added access onto Huntermark Road is they'll have to install a southbound left turn lane into the site to be able to effectively move traffic in and out. The building is being shown on this slide, so the design of it was intentional in terms of trying to capture more of a residential-type look. It's one-story tall with a hipped roof style, shake slap siding, as well as stone. So it does meet our requirements for building design and materials for multifamily-type uses. And then a couple renderings as well. So in conclusion, we are asking you to make two motions this evening. The first one being to adopt resolution number twenty-two-two dash forty-one, which would be approving the preliminary site and building plan and preliminary plat for Cantissimo of Chaska, and then based on the conditions that are listed within that resolution. And then the second motion would be to adopt ordinance number one thousand fourteen, which is approving the rezoning to a planned residential district, PRD eighty-three, to be exact. Happy to answer any questions. We do have the developer here as well to help answer questions, too.
Questions for Liz or the developer?
One quick question. So the left turn, the southbound left turn lane that would need to be added, would that require actual changing of the geometry of the roadway? Or would it just be within the existing constructs?
Do you want to answer?
We don't know that detail yet. Generally, I think the footprint accepts it. The question will be how much stacking distance we can get with the left turn lane without impacting the northbound left on Pioneer. The intent is to really set the intersection up very similar to what exists now with the neighborhood that's, the access that's just to the south. So we'll get into those, flush those details out in the final design.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question for the applicant. So I'll ask it and you're gonna have to come up. But I'm assuming, are you, I'm just curious, are they building it to sell to a management company? They plan on owning it and working with the management with just assisted living and partnerships? I'm always just kind of curious if that's, I don't need to know name or anything. I'm just curious how far along in that process is, or where they're at, or what they're thinking of? Because I assume they're not gonna run it necessarily themselves. There's lots of assisted living management-type companies. I'm kind of curious if that's the plan, and if a person is, or a group has been aligned or not. Trying to see who's gonna stand up first.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers and staff. Currently, as far as I know, so I'm, I'm Todd Ofton, TCO Design. I'm actually the representative for the applicant. So my understanding is that Anastasi, Anastasi is going to keep the ownership, but they're gonna partner with a management company. And we've had, during some of the meetings, we've had Ms. Jennifer Thorson, who has represented the management company. And they've worked together with some of the other projects they have in Fridley, Wayzata, Inoka, and so they would kind of partner up for that. That's my knowledge, anyway, at this point.
And that's the same company through all of them? Is that what you were saying?
Yes. Yep, same management company's doing those. And the, the ownership is a little bit different than those, but it's kind of the same people. So Anastasi is kind of new to it, but he's partnering up with Watermark and some of the others that have been involved.
Did she speak at the last, at concept?
She spoke at the concept, and she has spoken with Fire Department and with staff, yep.
I remember her, yeah.
And she was here at the planning commission meetings.
Are any of the units gonna be hub subsidized?
I don't know. Yeah, typically, my, again, my understanding, of course, she couldn't be here tonight. It's been perfect. She would know this better, but typically, they accept somebody with a two-year agreement of them kind of paying, you know, whatever resources they have. But then, of course, you know, once they're accepted, you don't kick people out. So then there may be some assistance that would be required if they can't.
Okay. Are we concerned at all with that hundred-foot setback versus one-twenty-five? Is that a big deal to us?
No, if it was a concern, we would voice that, but from our understanding...
Can the county express no? I mean, I figured they'd looked at it of some sort.
Right, yep, they've seen it a couple times already, yep.
Yeah, I like the flipping it there. It obviously impacts the trees, but I also don't like having a driveway, a very visible driveway run basically on the west side of the place to wrap around and that.
Oh, to go all the way around.
If you did the, if you did it the other way. So like, the black, the loss of more trees in the driveway just makes it not desirable to even to flip it, because it's a very visible corner, and so how you're gonna put a driveway right there, too.
This setup. And thank you for lining that Target driveway up, because I think it would have been a nightmare. I think that that really was a sticking point the last time, more than anything, was that. And I'm, I'm happy to see that that has been remedied. So that's, I think that's a good thing. Even though it's not a high-traffic thing, there's gonna be enough traffic. There's just a lot of traffic there in general, that's the whole thing. Just a ton of traffic, so, okay. Anyone else? Questions? Comments?
The only comment is that, you know, that driveway. I know it's, you know, took a lot of effort on your part and the residents of Pioneer Point to make sure that everyone's in agreement. So I appreciate everyone, you know, coming together in this one, because, you know, I think the solution to have this driveway lineup with Targets is the right thing to do, but I know it took a lot of effort to get there. So thank you to, you know, the, you know, the homeowners association and yourselves to all work together and bring that solution to fruition, yeah.
So you actually, you did get an easement through that piece there? Is that how that worked? Is that what, is that what I read in that?
So Mayor and council, we, we have an exhibit for an easement. So the easement isn't gonna be executed until this process is done, or the next two processes, because there's already three easements into this property from, or through Pioneer Point that was part of the original, original development. So what we're gonna do is trade those three for the new one. But, you know, of course, the ownership doesn't want to do that until this concept is approved. But yes, that'll, it will be approved. And, and Pioneer Point, by the way, has a vote on that also. It's not just us. So they, we start to work with them to get that approved.
Yeah, they had their vote counted in our packet.
Correct.
All right, anyone else?
I think it's a good-looking plan. I, I think there's definitely a need for that type of assisted living and memory care.
That's just a tough piece of property, more than...
It is, and that's true, too. And then you fix, you got the driveway issue figured out. It's not four stories. I remember, I do remember that plan. It's, you know, it's, it's a, I think it works well.
It's also lower traffic than a lot of the other proposals could have been. So, yeah, this, I think, benefits everyone.
All right. We have two, we have to make two motions here. So I'm gonna start with resolution twenty-two-two dash forty-one. Is there anyone that has an interest, or what are your thoughts on twenty-two twenty-four? Twenty-two, twenty-two twenty-two forty-one, I'm struggling with that. And that's the site and building preliminary.
Yep, so I'll make a motion to approve twenty-two twenty-two dash forty-one.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Wong, second by Councilmember Gra. Again, adopting resolution twenty-two-two dash forty-one, which is the preliminary site and building plan for Cantissimo. I think I'm saying that right. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Now, we're gonna do ordinance ten fourteen, which would be the rezoning of that same plot.
So move.
Motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, moves us to eight D, adopt resolution twenty-two-two dash forty-two and ordinance ten fifteen, approving preliminary plat and rezoning of Oak Creek.
Mayor and Councilmember, this is Oak Creek Preliminary Plat, also known as Sagewood Third Edition. This is one that went through the planning commission last week and is recommended for approval. Liz is here to give a presentation on this, and we do have developers present to be able to answer any questions.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mayor and council. The Oak Creek development was formerly known as Sagewood Third back in previous approvals. It was proposed, or it is proposed by D.R. Horton. We're looking at a preliminary plat and rezoning request attached with it. So we're also in the second step of our typical three-step process. The site is highlighted above. So the majority of the site is encompassed by property owned by the Kelzer family, basically this irregular-shaped lot. And then there is a small portion that will encompass property owned by Chaska Investments. So this stems off of the existing Clover Ridge neighborhood. You have Sophia Drive that stubs off to its easterly edge, as well as Clover Preserve Lane. Clover Preserve Lane and Sagewood Court and Circle encompass the second edition of Sagewood. So this has always been kind of a, a natural extension of that neighborhood, but we'll see some different changes with the layout this time around. Just to get into a little bit of the background, the Sagewood project dates back to two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, when the first and second editions were approved. And then back in May of two thousand twenty was when the third edition of Sagewood came through initially. The concept plan was approved at that time with conditions attached. And then it was some time until they brought it back for a revised concept plan, which was back in December of two thousand twenty-one. So that's where we last left off with this project. And when we brought it back in two thousand twenty-one, Sagewood was also coupled with the apartment project also proposed on the Chaska Investments property. So they did look at that together, primarily due to the, the necessary street system that was being proposed next to the apartment site. We wanted to see, or the developer wanted to see how both of those plans kind of fit into each other and, and make sure that there was still a viable apartment site left over, which was the case. And then it was March of this year that the annexation occurred on the Kelzer property. So one of the conditions of approval during December of two thousand twenty-one was that the Kelzer property was annexed into the city of Chaska in order for them to move forward on their preliminary plan. So that was achieved in March of this year. And then I just kind of want to run through kind of the progression here of where we started in May of two thousand twenty, with the Sagewood Third Plan or Oak Creek Plan, and kind of where we are today. So the May two thousand twenty plan is shown on this screen here. This was primarily only on the Kelzer property. It showed a total of eighty-three lots on forty-two acres of land. There were a multitude of concerns that were raised during that time, stemming from the access into the development and really a push to explore more access opportunities. The traffic was a concern in tree preservation. So they, when they came back in December of two thousand twenty-one, was the result of responding to a majority of those concerns. So they did come back again with a coupled concept plan with the apartment site, which is shown very faintly here on this plan. This is showing the December two thousand twenty-one plan. With that, there was a total of a hundred and seven lots proposed on fifty-two acres of land. The main concern that was raised during two thousand twenty was, again, exploring new opportunities for access into the site, which they showed in their December two thousand twenty-one concept plan off of Clover Ridge Drive. So they did partner with Chaska Investments here to show a development access off of Clover Ridge Drive, as well as how a potential apartment site could fit into that area. The apartment site was roughly a hundred and sixty-unit apartment, known as Cloverfield Apartments at that time of the project. And again, all of this was shown to see how an apartment site and a new road extension could fit into this site. Also at that time, Sophia Drive was shown to be modified as a cul-de-sac versus a through-street in the, versus the two thousand twenty plan. And then Clover Preserve Lane was also shown to extend as kind of a secondary access into the development. The tree preservation that occurred during that time was eighteen lots versus twenty-three lots in the wooded area compared to the two thousand twenty plan. So twenty-three, or eighteen lots are shown only in the wooded area versus twenty-three lots, which was shown during two thousand twenty. So that increased the preservation of the area from fifty-one percent to the, from the former thirty-eight percent tree preservation. So getting into some of the changes that have occurred since December of two thousand twenty-one into this new plan that we're showing this evening, the road access has changed into the overall site. So the majority of the development will only come from one major access known as Oak Creek Drive, which is that long extension from Clover Ridge Drive. So that, again, will serve the majority of the development at eighty-four lots. The cul-de-sac on Sophia Drive will be maintained, however, it has been pared down to five lots versus six lots. And then Clover Preserve Lane has been modified to show two cul-de-sacs on it serving thirteen lots, whereas before it was showing as a, again, a secondary access into the main development of Oak Creek. So those are the, the main changes regarding the, the street system for this new plan. A traffic study was also completed in between that time, and that was provided as a supplement to your packet. The conclusion of that was that the project will have appropriate access into the site and adequate measures on the surrounding road network, and concluded that there is available capacity on the roads to accommodate the projected traffic from this development. Couple other changes that have occurred is the total lot count. So five lots have been eliminated since the December two thousand twenty-one plan. So that comes down to a total of a hundred and two lots for the total site. Tree preservation, they are showing an additional twelve trees planned to be preserved with this new two thousand twenty-two plan compared, compared to the two thousand twenty-one plan. And then lastly, with the Jonathan Association, there was discussion around potentially being absorbed into that association. The developer has been actively engaging with the association on including this development into the Jonathan Association. They, where they left off is, that was their proposal to the Jonathan Association, and there was a decision from the association yet to be administered from them. So there may or may not be another update on that this evening, but they are actively working with them to get it included. Just sliding into the proposed layout as it is proposed this evening. I'll come back to this, but just to touch on some of those changes that have occurred with the layout of the site. So the Oak Creek Drive extension is showing very similar to what was shown during December two thousand twenty-one. You have... You have six lots being accessed off of kind of that prime access area, as well as a majority of the lots shown on the Kelzer property. Then the cul-de-sac on Sophia Drive, which serves five lots. And then the two cul-de-sacs, which are kind of oriented pretty similar to the Sagewood Second development on the north side and the south side of Clover Preserve Lane. So that would be a total of 13 lots there. The amenity area or tot lot is proposed in between the Clover Preserve Lane cul-de-sacs, as well as the majority of the development in kind of a nice wooded area next to the creek. Just getting back to some of the existing conditions of the, of the area that they're looking at. So the total acreage of the Oak Creek area is roughly 52 acres in size. It was, the Kelzer portion was formerly a part of what we consider the orderly annexation area of Lake Town Township, but it is now a part of the city of Chaska since the annexation has occurred this year. The creek does bifurcate the site from north to west. So you have kind of the east and west sides, what we call it, with the cul-de-sacs proposed on the east side of that creek system, and then the majority of those lots on the west side. The majority of the significant trees that we've seen out on site really are within that easterly area, east of the creek and off of Sophia Drive and Clover Preserve Lane. So those have been kind of the primaries for tree preservation. As it relates to how the comprehensive plan and the Clover Ridge plan have guided these areas, the comp plan, which is shown in the top right excerpt from the comp plan, shows this area as low-density residential and open space. So the proposal is consistent with these guidances. And then with the Clover Ridge plan, it also guided this area for standard lot, single-family, which this proposal is also consistent with. So what they're specifically requesting this evening is for preliminary plat approval for 102 single-family lots. And then the second part of that would be a rezoning request to a planned residential district, PRD 85. As I mentioned before, the lots, total 102 lots. They're roughly 65-foot wide, which is consistent with the other Sagewood lots that have already been built out. In addition to what I already mentioned in a previous slide, with the Kelzer family retaining the portions of their property that are not being used for development, they will continue to farm these areas. So Outlet H is one of those areas, as well as Outlet I. So as a result of that, there are two farm accesses shown through the development that would allow them to still access these areas. So those are outlots that are shown in between the single-family lots there, which would allow them to gain access to farm those fields. Another point that is significant for the context of this site is the location of the railroad on the northerly boundary of this project. So there was comments raised about the screening to be put in place along that edge, and I'll show a couple other follow-up exhibits to kind of zoom into that and what they're doing. In terms of tree preservation, we have the tree preservation plan shown on here. So the red axes are where the removals will occur. So they did conduct a tree survey as a part of the preliminary plan, which surveyed 219 total trees. The majority of those are oak trees that range in large caliber from about 20 inches to 35 inches in size. What they plan to preserve are a total of 101 trees of the total site, which amounts to 2,354 caliber inches of what's shown on the site. What they do preserve, they will put into a conservation easement to, that the association will have ownership over and maintenance over. In terms of what gets removed, a total of 118 trees are planned to be removed, and that totals 2,348 caliber inches. So what they do plan to preserve, the areas that these trees fall in are mainly within outlot areas, which connect into the other outlot system on Sagewood Second, just to the east there, and wrap around portions of the cul-de-sac areas. There's another outlot shown in between Sagewood Second and the proposed Oak Creek area that will save a big chunk of trees there. And then there are some areas of the rear lots or the rear yards that they do plan to preserve additional trees. Getting into the landscape plan, and I'm just mainly focusing on kind of that northerly edge of the site as it abuts the railroad right-of-way. They do plan to put in a staggered layering of coniferous trees mixed in with some deciduous trees to provide that all-year-round screening. In addition to that, they will install a six-foot-high privacy fence along the entire edge of that to provide additional screening and demarcation of that edge. They provided a couple section drawings just to show kind of the variation that, of grades that are achieved kind of throughout the development in certain areas to show the screening mechanisms being put in place and the separation between the homes and such. So one of the things that we've kind of highlighted as something to work on as they prepare for final is to explore a more direct pedestrian connection in between the west side of Oak Creek and into Sophia Drive. They do show a pathway system in between the two north and south cul-de-sac areas to provide that pedestrian connection through the site, which was a great additive to the project. I think in terms of kind of the crux of the discussion and the goal of this connection was providing a more direct route for people on the west side to gain access to the elementary school, which more directly comes off of Sophia Drive. So trying to see if there's ways to provide more of a direct connection between the east and west sides to provide a better pedestrian connection there. So that was one of the things to work on. We did get comment on, from the Planning Commission as well to continue to work with them on tree preservation in a couple areas, which was added as a condition of approval and included in the resolution this evening. So with that, two motions, again like the last project. One to adopt resolution number 2022-42, which would be approving the preliminary plat for Oak Creek, and then based on the conditions that are listed within that. And then a second motion to adopt ordinance number 1015, which would be approving the rezoning to a planned residential district number 85. Happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, we do have a development team here as well.
Alright, questions for Liz? So that, that, things to work on, is that that trail that's coming up to Sophia that we talked about a little bit this afternoon, is that that one?
Yes, so more of the direct connection approach between kind of the east and west sides. You know, they're showing a stormwater pond opening there today. Is there a way for that to get extended across the creek and provide more of that direct connection to the west side? Is kind of what we're referencing. There may be other ways to look at that, but that's kind of what we've highlighted so far as something to continue to look at.
Alright. I, I know that, I'm sure there's some residents here. We're gonna take some comments. But I'll, I'm just gonna start off by, if the comments already been made, let's let it go at that. If there's somebody that's speaking for the neighborhood, that's fine as well. We'll, we'll have some comments and we'll kind of go from there. I know we've had many, many comments regarding this proposals and this, but I still want to listen to some of the residents. I know we as council all got emails from people as well, and if those folks are here, they can certainly address their emails as well, so. Oh, yep. We got, we got a question, sorry.
Sorry, I was waiting.
Oh, so we got a question for the developer. I like to get all, we get all of our questions handled up here.
Sorry, I didn't have a question for Liz. I was waiting for the.
Okay, sorry.
So Liz, can you bring up the illustrative cross-sections, the railroad diagram? I saw a question. So you talked about a six-foot privacy fence?
Correct.
That's gonna buffer. Just looking at that diagram. Where, so the fence, how, so Section 8, that, that particular schematic, how tall is the, is the rail line in aspect to the six-foot fence?
Probably not much. Sure, you can put contours and numbers on here, boss.
It's, the rail is about 14 feet higher than our lot.
Okay.
Through that section.
Okay.
So then as we work our way farther west, the rail starts coming down.
Right.
More in line with our rear lots.
Yeah, I visually see that and everything like that. I just, I have just a little concern over that particular lot. Just how tall that rail line is in aspect to the house? And is there, I mean, I know you're gonna do plantings, but they're, it takes time for things to grow, right?
Correct.
Is a way of making sure we have faster-growing landscape in that particular lot, or?
We can look at our plant types there, and maybe we can go with an arborvitae or something. I look at Liz because she may have more, a different plant idea than I do, but we've done arborvitae's in spots that grow quicker, and maybe it's a combination of some evergreens and some arborvitae's, where arborvitae's grow quicker, and we fill it out with some evergreens. I mean, we certainly can talk with our landscapers and our landscape architect and come up with something that grows quicker. I, I do know from experiences, we've built a long way roads, and it's a concern, it's a concern for us, but there's always seems to be a buyer that's willing to.
Take that on. And I understand that, so that's why it just, that one threw me off because it's pretty high as an aspect to the house. But I understand that, you're right, they're gonna visibly see the rail line there. And it's nice that there is a privacy fence that's gonna be built. But I just want to make sure that I ask that question just in clarification of that diagram.
Since we're on this topic, why not build a berm and put the fence on top of the berm?
Working with the railroad, we have to make sure the drainage works in that area. If we put a berm up, we'd, we'd block some of the water either coming off the rail or from our backyards. We have to make sure drainage works. So to put a berm up three feet high, you need 25, 30 feet. So then we really chew up the backyard, so then you have no backyard next to the rail also. So we made them lots extra deep to try to give us room for a landscape buffer.
This isn't a whole lot different than if you go over onto Romeo Drive, which is on the sort of west end of Clover Ridge Drive. There's, I'd say probably 15 homes that are pretty, pretty much in the same situation. And then homes that have been that way for a long time have been the ones along Ashley.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, that's a little bit more accurate, in my opinion. Because Romeo, the rail line's down.
It is. And it's sort of, the rail line sort of goes up and down through that area, but the area that's closer down to Bavaria is probably more. And those houses have been in there for 25, 30 years.
That's Ashley.
Yeah, I went and looked, I went and looked at Ashley today, so.
Yeah, they are right there.
Mm-hmm. They are.
Is there gonna be any additional like sound insulation or, you know, or additional window treatments to make sure that, you know, those are a little bit more, or, you know, soundproof, or is it just the same spec that you're building all the other homes?
It's the same spec, but fortunately in the state of Minnesota, the energy code takes care of quite of the sound requirements because in other places where we looked at sound stuff, our normal building construction meets the sound requirements when we're along a Mid-Dot Highway and such. So just with the energy code in Minnesota, we get the sound requirements met too.
I think the other thing to point out in the Clover Ridge neighborhood that's different than Ashley is that we have a silent crossing.
Yeah.
There's no crossing here.
Yeah, so there's, there's a crossing down at County Road 10, which is now two and a half miles to the south and west. And then there's the Clover Ridge Crossing, which is a silent crossing. And then there's the Bavaria Crossing, which is a full crossing with loud horns. So Ashley's a little bit different because they actually get the horns at the crossing.
That was my question. Thank you.
Anyone else have a question for a developer? So don't miss.
Sorry.
No, it's my fault. Alright. Alright, is there anyone that would like to, from a resident's perspective, if they got any comments regarding this? I would need a name and address, please, for our records. Alright, I got two going. One of you two, one of you come on up.
So my name's Ray Linder. I live at 1401 Clover Preserve Lane. I came in and talked to you guys at the prior meeting. I just wanted to say from the Clover Preserve Lane neighbors, I've been working with a lot of them and getting feedback from them as we've gone through this process. I'd like to thank the staff and the builder and the council and Mayor Winchell and Councilmember Hubbard in particular for, for asking for a couple of changes that have been incorporated into this plan. Overall, from the standpoint of the neighborhood, the, having the cul-de-sacs on both streets seems to work for most of the people that I've talked to. There's people here that, if they disagree, they're free to step up and talk. But from our standpoint, I think this is a drastic improvement over the last version we saw. And I'm pretty, I'm comfortable with this version from my standpoint and with the feedback that we've seen. I know there's been some comments at the Planning Council that Travis had, and I've sent an email to you reinforcing that I don't necessarily disagree with those at all, and I think they would be positive additions. I don't know if they'll work in the overall plan, but it would go. I do have some, couple of comments on what I just saw here on the screening. I guess, I don't know the purpose of the big, long fence there. I worry that a big, long fence like that becomes a graffiti site sooner or later. And just thinking about, do you really need the fence there? Or can you just get by with the natural?
Are you talking to railroad tracks though?
Yeah, the railroad track fence. Because that's gonna run.
I guess that's really not a requirement by us.
Yeah.
Alright, we're not requiring that.
No, no.
No, I mean, it's, it's a suggestion that the developers brought forward, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's, it's coming from the developer, and I guess, you know, they could speak on to some of the rationale. I, I think from staff's perspective, it was viewed as an opportunity to provide a demarcation between the backyard lot line and where the railroad begins. You think about children and things who are gonna be living in that area. It seemed like an opportunity to enhance safety for the neighborhood as a whole.
Yeah, I guess my, my thing would be making sure that somebody's responsible for the maintenance of that fence, because if it's a.
And that would be an amenity that would be part of, if it ends up being in the Jonathan Association or whatever the HOA is at the end of the day, that would be an amenity.
But that's just a huge fence to maintain, and that's not cheap. So I just want to make sure it doesn't become a rundown thing and guarantee it'll be a graffiti site sooner or later, so. Just want, you know, because we have a lot of houses along, I think you were mentioning the different areas, along Pioneer there where the railroad track goes, and it's all pretty much naturally screened. And if you get enough natural screening in, the issues with the kids, clearly you gotta, with kids, you gotta be careful, but six-foot fence isn't gonna stop kids from jumping over either, so. It'll stop the little ones, though, so I don't disagree. But just a thought, something that you could maybe add in as far as the maintenance of that, and how do they keep it looking good if it becomes a graffiti zone? If it becomes an art zone? Okay, fine, that's what we want, but.
Alright. All right.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you, appreciate your comments. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, and City Council. My name is Pablo Murillo, I'm a resident of fourteen sixty-six Clover Preserve Lane. I just wanna give an applause to all of you, the developer, the city. This has been a, to me, it was a very dicey situation. I think you did a terrific job balancing the economics. A developer has to make money. They, they invest and they risk time and money. That's only fair, this is America still. The city council, the city administrators, staff, they have the tough job. I really appreciate primarily protecting safety of children. 'Cause at the heart of this whole thing is not whether it looks nice or whether it's gonna be this or that. Is it going to protect our families? 'Cause give it a, give it ten percent plus minus, we'll have about two to three hundred new residents in this area. By the time you add the apartments, we're talking a number of people. So thank you so much for giving us that opportunity. Perhaps a little signage would help also, to just slow cars down. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else?
There's someone that raised their hand on the-
Gary, you have a, you have a question on Zoom.
Okay, you can, let's go with that one.
I did too.
I didn't see it either.
He pointed up to the ceiling.
Yep, all right, Beth, you can say.
Hi, my name is Beth Sanchez, I live on Sofia Drive. And I have also, you know, some of the council members and spoken to some of you guys as well. I understand what's going, going on and the compromises that need to be made. I just want to raise my voice and say, yeah, that pushing something from other people's front yards to my backyard is a solution for many, but not for all. It wasn't on any of the twenty forty, or, I'm sorry, it was on the twenty forty comprehensive plan. Our backyard is supposed to be a natural green space, and now we have a building back there. It's, it's just hard to digest. DR Horton took down a bunch of the trees to the south to make a development. We're gonna get new development to our west. The north, we're gonna have a couple of houses from DR Horton, as well as two large apartment complexes. And then the middle apartment complex is also seeing some of the use of us. So when other people are complaining about, you know, stuff going through their front yard, it's gone through every part of my yard now. And it wasn't on any type of plan. I just understand how it might have been made, I just wanted to see that from the side.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. All right, somebody was getting up back there.
Evening, Council. My name is Travis Olson, fourteen thirty-nine Sofia Drive. You received the, the document that I attached to the planning commission. And for the most part, it was addressed during planning commission and put as a, put as a condition. So, you know, short answer is, I'm not gonna spend much time on that. Because, you know, the city has to work with DR Horton to be able to identify trees to save. Things they didn't do in Phase Two, we all know that. This is the opportunity to actually make that impact. And I would expect to see some significant changes in the tree preservation that they have done. They wanna pat themselves on the back for what they presented here, but they kind of created their own mess with what they put in Phase One and Phase Two. They wanna say they have to spend a million dollars for a road. Well, they're having to do that because of what they did in Phase One and Phase Two. It's not the problem now, it's, that's their resolution to be able to make the development actually happen. They decided to step off Clover Preserve Drive on, on Sage One. But like I said, what's done is done. Now is the opportunity to be able to save some trees. What I do wanna make a comment on is, in the concept stage in November and December, there was a condition to be able to say that they needed to have that walkway connection from Sofia Drive to across the creek and into the development. It's not there. So there was a condition in the concept plan that was not actually addressed in the preliminary plan. Even though the lots are, if you look at the lot's size on the Oak Creek side of it, where that path will go, they have large enough lots where they can adjust the size to be able to accommodate that path. They just didn't put it in. Yet again, a way for them to save cost, because they don't wanna do it. This is our opportunity for them to push and force them to actually do what they're supposed to do. The walking path from Sofia Drive to Clover, or I'll say Oak Creek Circles, the cul-de-sacs on the southern portion off of Clover Preserve Lane, the walking path actually goes into the cul-de-sac bulb. And then everybody has to walk through the cul-de-sac to get to the next walkway. Don't know if that's required, if it's recommended, but that's what they've done. So, I mean, to be able to actually have a walking path to go from Sofia and connect, but without hitting the street, that would be ideal as well, too. And the previous neighbor mentioned about, you know, signage. Just kinda questioning on what kind of stop signs or signage is actually gonna be in the eighty-two house development side of things. There's really no ideal four-way stop, so where do they plan on having crosswalks and pedestrian safety to be able to actually cross over from one side to the other? Because it's a long path from where Oak Creek starts, all the way to, I'll say, where there's the circle. So it's the, be able to address where that is. And then the last one is just the tot lot. They have the tot lot tucked down at the bottom, down by the retention pond, away from the majority of the residents in the, in the new development. But closer, obviously, to Clover Preserve Lane. You know, I think that that actually should be moved, or at least be more centralized versus tucked down in the corner, away from everything. So those are my comments, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gary, we did have one other question on Zoom.
Okay, bring him on, Kevin.
Hey, how's it going?
Good.
Good, I just wanted to say it's looking pretty good. I see that the connection, I see that the, the Sofia is in the building. I can't see an idea. As a bike rider, I bike my kids, they're over range their whole, my career there. And that would be a great patch, which would get the neighborhood to get the kids walking, biking to school. And I'm retired now, I started driving school bus. And I noticed that these cul-de-sacs are a little tight for making a turnaround. I'm just wondering if, I guess, the airport is left already. They're trying to get their radius a little bit wider to the buses to make their turnarounds. Garden Day, of course, which is about every day, Clover Ridge, the different companies. That's hard for the buses to make a turnaround. And then they ended up having to back up, which is very dangerous for school. Kids and buses backing up. Anyway, two comments I did.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you. So I have, is there anybody else on the phone or on the virtual?
There is no one else.
Okay. So regarding Mr. Olson's comment, was there ever a trail supposed to go across the creek into the other development? Or, I won't say other development, it's all the same, but the other side of the creek?
It was a condition that was put in place to explore that.
What's that?
It was a condition that was put in place to explore that further.
Okay, so it was asked for?
Yes.
Okay.
Something to explore, yes.
And then, I, I'm not sure that I understood the one about coming through a cul-de-sac onto the road. I, does somebody else understand that?
Yeah.
Where, where are we at here? I got mine-
So can you bring up the, the, where the double bulb cul-de-sacs are, the, bring up that illustration?
So are you talking right here?
Yeah, on the bottom, yeah. So the top one is actually, it comes in from a path, like the sidewalk to a path. It comes in through an empty lot there, and then it wraps around on this one.
But don't we have-
There's no sidewalk or anything on this, or it doesn't look like it.
Well, we require sidewalks, right?
Yeah, we require them.
So there's a sidewalk there. So it's basically, is it, so the question is, is it, well, Liz is bleeding out.
Is there sidewalk in the cul-de-sac though?
I think there's called sidewalks.
There's, there's not sidewalks required on the cul-de-sac. Yeah, that's, yeah, there's, there's no sidewalks in cul-de-sacs, just on the, the straight roads.
I think that's the-
Okay, so that's the question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess-
So Liz, if you can just bring it up, so we can make sure we, we're all set on what we're talking about first. So I think that what, I think what we're talking about is, so that's the trail that starts in the north. And you see it actually attaches to the sidewalk that's part of Sofia Drive, right? And then, so Liz, if you move your pointer where that, that meets Sofia Drive on the, on the top there. And if you follow that trail, it weaves its way through the outlot. And then what comes down, it comes down between two houses. But that part of the circle, there's just a, you're basically in the roadway, there's no sidewalk there. And I think the concern is, is that you're basically dropped right into the roadway rather than be able to continue. So if you have young kids, they're gonna be in the road.
'Cause they have to go across to get to the trail.
Exactly.
Oh, magic touch.
Feedback.
So I think maybe just to briefly answer that, from a policy standpoint, we don't typically include sidewalks around the bulb of cul-de-sacs. So that's probably why they're showing it that way. But I think the question is, you know, where does the connection come from?
To me, it seems like there's an opportunity to look at Outlet B and look at how you could potentially bring that trail connection down to that southern, that southern trail connection.
Or is Outlet B?
Over on the left side.
It's on the left side.
Of that.
Yeah, I, I think generally speaking, the request about being prescriptive is to make sure that the trail connection connects to another trail connection, not a roadway.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I, I don't think we should be overly prescriptive about it. But, but I think it is worth looking at how you can make a connection to the trail as opposed to the street, because that hooks into our sidewalk system.
Yep. So where, where do you wanna go? You wanna go in Outlet B? That's where the creek is.
I'm just saying that, I'm just saying that might be an option, but there might be other options too.
So I think the general suggestion is, just make sure the trail doesn't end in the roadway. That just, it ends connected to another pedestrian path or sidewalk or something.
So kids aren't, are right into a street.
'Cause if they're just like burrowing down their little bicycles really fast, oh, this is super cool. And then bam, they come right out of the roadway when someone's not expecting them and there's a car there.
When you hit the other side, you're gonna hit the sidewalks.
Right.
So.
Yep. And so on the north side were good, the south side, a little bit of work.
Okay. I just wasn't, until I brought my map back up, I wasn't sure. Okay.
I think it's a good suggestion.
And I know, I got a, I got an email, and I don't know if everyone got it, from the Hartford's that are in the last-
Three one zero zero nine?
The, the last house on the left on Sophie, about the trail. Nate and I and Liz sat down and tried to figure out if there's a way to move that trail. But if we move that trail somewhere else, we're, we're gonna lose more trees than what we are now. So I, I just don't know of a real, true way to move that trail. And then again, we would run into that same issue we just are talking about on the south side. So I just wanna be clear that we looked at what the options are. You moved it, then the house moves over closer, and that takes out a bunch more trees. And now, now we're going out into a cul-de-sac with no, I mean, the sidewalk's closed. But again, it's whatever. So I just wanted to mention that we did look at that as an options for other ways to do that. Okay. All right, anyone else? I'm just gonna do the last call if there's one more, or anyone else. Otherwise, I'm not seeing anyone moving forward. But thank you, everyone, for your comments. And I, at this point, would just, I, I would like to say, I, I think this has been a good process. We, we've got a lot of input from residents. I think changes have been made due to the comments we've made. I'll say, DR Horton has gone way above and beyond the things that they've done about tree preservation. If you really look at some of these plans, they are putting retaining walls up around trees to preserve those trees, which are, none of that is a required option. But that's a way for them in their mass grading to be able to preserve more trees. So I think that they have done everything that we've asked for as far as preserving as many trees as possible in this. So I do, I think this plan is a very workable plan. I'm sure that there are someone that will disagree with me. But I, again, I'm gonna come back and I'm gonna say that it's a very workable plan. And I, I think that in the long run, I really think that this is a, this is a win-win for everyone involved in here. Again, I'm sure someone can argue my point, but overall, I think it's, so it's a pretty good plan. So thank you for, for all and all the residents that have been part of this process. It, it's truly a process. And when we come out with a good outcome, it's always great. So we're very happy to see that happen, so.
I just wanna echo kind of the mayor's thoughts. I know that this has been a process, and I appreciate all of the input and feedback from all of the neighbors. Just from the start of what this looked like, you know, back in, what, two thousand nineteen? Or was it twenty, no, it was twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty-three.
Um, and the changes that have been made. And then again, I, I really appreciate everyone giving their feedback and coming together. I realize that there are folks that are, you know, still not satisfied, and I understand that. And I understand that the, the trauma of tree loss from previous development, you know, exists in some of the neighbors' mindset. And, and I'm, I just really appreciate everyone really trying to figure out what's gonna be the best for both of those streets. And I know that the road is not pleasing for some of the folks in, in their backyards. But looking at the, kind of the spatial aspect of the wetlands and the reserve that's back there, I'm hopeful that it will blend into the, the landscape eventually. So I just wanna thank everybody for coming out and appreciate their time.
So I'll jump in.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I'll jump in. And, you know, I know that this, these large developments like this are always trying for everyone. Developers wanna get as much bang for the buck as they can in terms of, you know, number of lots and maximum sales, you know, sales figures against, you know, what the investment is. And for residents, it's a huge intrusion. And it's awesome, it often means an impact to what you've been experiencing for past five, ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years, right, or even more. And it can also, it often be a very significant kind of clash of two different points of view. This is, probably exemplifies a lot of that clash, right? We have two completely different points of view that are hitting and have hit. And the good news is that if we take a step back and look at from where we started to where we are today, a lot of the big rocks, a lot of the big challenges have really been addressed. Now, there's still challenges, doesn't mean that we're gonna say, nope, everything's good to go and, you know, not continue working on it. But I think it's important to note that we've come a long way since that very first vision. And there is still room to, to improve. There are some, still some things yet to be addressed, you know, whether it's, you know, like, you know, addressing things like, you know, who own ownership of the fence and maintenance and things like that. Or making sure that the connection of the trails is going out to the right places. Tree preservation is still a pretty significant topic for a number of people. And it's important that we make sure that we, in good faith, address those, that we document and we have accountability to make sure that, you know, those things are taken care of, that they're, and that they're taken care of in the right way as much as is technically and practically possible. Now, that's always debatable depending upon who, which side you're on, of what's practical, what's economic. But those are discussions that need to continue happening. And I encourage staff and the residents to continue working on this. And certainly, you know, from, as residents, certainly you have my support. I think we wouldn't have, you know, it's been a long journey. And, you know, I wanna make sure that, you know, as residents, you're getting, you know, as, you know, as much as, as retaining as much of the care- I think we wouldn't have, you know, it's been a long journey and, you know, wanna make sure that, you know, as residents, you're getting, you know, as, you know, as much as, as retaining as much of the character of the community that you had before going into it, knowing that we're, we're gonna be building more homes. But those new community members will just add to that fabric of the community. So, you know, certainly, you know, we'll just keep working together and see if we can make this, you know, the best project it can be. Not an easy road, but, you know, I'm glad they're all in this together.
All right, anyone else?
All right. All these, I have a, I support it in general. I'm not gonna repeat what was said up here already. I do think it's interesting that we ended up with a single entry on the north side. You know, and I understand the concerns, how it all kinda circled around, cause you had it at one spot and then we moved it and then you kinda had, you know, unfortunately, a little bit of neighbor against neighbor here, a little bit of concern, which is never easy to, and never wants to be pushed to with the city. I do think it's a, maybe a, a little bit of a missed opportunity to, to connect these groups. Because they're gonna go all, you know, they're, they're gonna be separate. There's gonna be a path, but in general, these neighborhoods will be very distinctly different and separate. So, a- again, I, I think it's, it was a long, long process to get here. But I, I just kinda wanna say that I think, you know, I don't know where I would've put that other connection. At this point, that doesn't matter, cause that's not what's in front of us. But I do think, like I said, there is a missed opportunity to interconnect to that. And I do also wanna just state the obvious is that, you know, look at this as a, a strong win for the, to neighborhood. There are other developments that have proposed double cul-de-sacs and we've said no. Right? And so I think that's important to understand too. Like I said, it's, it's a good plan and I, I appreciate it. I know the one gentleman thanked the council, well, I, I reverse that and thank everyone sitting here. I've, you know, I tell people all the time that I'd much rather get emails and letters and calls and people show up, um, in this process now and be a part of it versus when, you know, shovels hit ground and there's not much we can do anymore. So you, you shaped that as well. So I appreciate your time and your feedback, uh, and hanging out with us on a Monday evening. So, uh, I do appreciate that, but those are my only comments. I think it's, you know, I echo the comments about that were up here, but I do think like, um, it was a missed opportunity to maybe connect these neighborhoods a little bit better, but it is what it is at this point.
I understand like how you feel about it and I would share those feelings, but with the creek and the trees, I went and visually looked at where all those trees were sitting. And I, I really honestly think as I looked through naturally, I know that there's going to be tree loss. And any tree loss, you know, of big oaks and, and significant trees is a hard loss. But I also think that there was a lot of trees that were saved. And that the, as far as the aesthetic of the additional houses in those cul-de-sacs, um, it's gonna really build character in those two streets. And I think from a standpoint of equity between those two streets, it was the best solution, so.
All right, uh, just before we, uh, bring this to a close, uh, all I, all I wanna, uh, forward on to you guys at D R is, um, again, thank you. But just, I know as things, you start construction, things can change. So if there's ways to preserve more trees, that you do your best, which I'm sure you understand that, you've gotten that message very, very clear here. And, uh, um, about that, if there's a way to reroute that, that trail, obviously. I look, I've been looking at this plan since the tot lot question came up. I'm not sure where there's a better place at this time, um, than, than what that location is. And I mean, I look, there is your trail that connects the two sides as I put this closer together now. Yeah, and if there's a way that that one can come down and even tie to the other trail, I think that would really tie things together nicely. So, uh, please, as you move forward, uh, look at those. I think those are some, uh, fairly major changes, or minor changes, I mean. But, um, again, we'll just keep up the tree preservation as best we can, so thank you guys, I appreciate it. All right, uh, with that, again, we have, um, we, we have, um, um, two, two motions that we'd have to make, um, on this particular project. And we'll start with, uh, resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-two would be, uh, if, if we wanna go ahead and, uh, approve the preliminary plot. So I would, I would entertain what your thoughts are on twenty twenty-two dash forty-two. That's approving preliminary plot.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-two.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Again, that's resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-two approving preliminary plot for Oak Creek. Discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Now we're gonna move to ordinance, uh, ten fifteen and that's rezoning from open to, uh, PMD fifteen.
Open to PRD eighty-five.
Oh, no, no, I gotta keep going, to, uh, to a PRD eighty-five. So we're, we're going to a PRD eighty-five. Motion by, uh, Councilmember Gra.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield. Discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we now move to, uh, eight E, adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-three in ordinance ten sixteen, approving preliminary site and building plan, uh, preliminary plot rezoning of Harbor Clover Ridge Apartments.
Mayor, Councilmember, this is an item coming to you from the Planning Commission with a recommendation for approval. Liz is here to, uh, give the, uh, presentation.
Thank you, Councilman Mr. Mayor. We have another preliminary site and building plan, preliminary plat and rezoning request this evening for the Clover Ridge Apartments project being proposed by A V Development.
Hey Liz, I'm gonna pull your microphone.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Thanks, Matt.
Uh, we are also at the second step in our three-step process. Um, the site is shown on the screen above. Um, it's a site that's located on kind of the west and south sides of Clover Ridge Drive. You have the Twin Cities and Western Railroad abutting it on its southern side. Pioneer Vista, um, is a town home, town home project, uh, just to the north and east of this site. And then additional residential around as well. So this project was also approved back in December of two thousand twenty-one. Uh, that's when the concept plan came through and was approved. Um, in terms of how the comp plan and the land use, um, are set up out here, the comprehensive plan does guide this site to be high-density residential. Uh, so the proposal this evening is consistent with that. Um, it's currently zoned rural, so it, uh, will also need to be rezoned, uh, to a planned residential district. Uh, the site itself, um, is a twelve-acre site. Um, there is a large wetland complex that encompasses a majority of the site, or I would say half of the site. So roughly six acres are kind of unencumbered, uh, by that wetland area. Um, there's two stormwater ponds, um, that are existing today and those were put in place, um, when the extension of Clover Ridge Drive connected up to Pioneer Trail were done. And those are city ponds, so those will, uh, remain under city on, ownership and maintenance moving forward. Uh, so the request that they're asking for is for preliminary site and building plan and preliminary plat, uh, for a one hundred and nineteen-unit market rate apartment. And then the second part of that request is a rezoning to PRD eighty-four. Um, and this is the site plan being shown on this slide. Um, so the building is kind of a irregular shape, um, what we would consider maybe a U-shaped, um, layout. It will be four stories tall. Um, access into the site will come from, uh, kind of the southeasterly portion of the site and will directly connect into Clover Ridge Drive and will be the main and only point of access into the site. Um, there is surface parking lot being proposed kind of, uh, in between the building adjacent, uh, to Clover Ridge Drive, um, which will provide, uh, seventy-five above-ground stalls. Um, there are, uh, additional covered parking, um, areas within the building. One that will go below grade, um, with access shown on the south portion of the site. And then another, uh, covered stall area, uh, that would be at grade. So the covered stall portion would total a hundred and twenty, uh, total, um, parking stalls. So for a total of a hundred and ninety-five, uh, parking stalls on site. Um, the parking proposed for this, uh, building does fall under our normal, uh, requirements for multifamily. Um, we require a two parking stall, uh, provision per dwelling unit. Um, they are proposing a ratio of one point six five parking stalls per dwelling unit. What we've done in the past before, uh, with a very similar scaled site and, uh, use is over at Lake Jonathan Flats. Uh, we did, um, approve that site, uh, to be under our normal two stall per dwelling unit, uh, requirement. Their require, requirement, um, was to provide, uh, one stall per, uh, bedroom unit within the building. So if we applied that same, um, uh, provision here, um, they would have to provide a hundred and ninety-five stalls on the site as they have a hundred and ninety-five, uh, bedrooms. So, uh, the size of this building is very equivalent, uh, to the Lake Jonathan Flats building at a hundred and seventeen units. Uh, the size of the building and the unit count again are very comparable. Um, and what we've seen in, um, other past projects is that that one-to-one ratio, um, does work. Um, this is the landscape plan and I realize it's a, a little hard to read when we expand it out from a zoomed-out scale. But they do meet our landscape ordinance in terms of, uh, the, uh, quantity of caliber inches, uh, provided on the site. Um, they are proposing a couple amenity areas. They have a terrace, um, outdoor patio space, kind of on that north westerly portion of the building that will be accessed, um, from the interior and provide some seating area, uh, for the residents. Another outdoor patio space, which again is connected through some pedestrian, uh, sidewalk, uh, systems, is a grilling and picnic area, kind of on, uh, near the southeasterly portion of the site. And then they will also be incorporating a passive trail system through their site, which kind of takes advantage of the grades, um, the steeper grades along the edge here and provides a couple bench areas for people to sit and overlook the large wetland complex that surrounds this site. Um, this is the elevation drawing, uh, for the building. Uh, so the, uh, material makeup of the building, um, is a mix of brick, uh, and fiber cement siding and a variety of applications on the building as well as some architectural precast, uh, paneling in some locations. From a makeup standpoint, they do meet our ordinance requirements for multifamily. Couple renderings of the building. Uh, so one of the, the comments that we have, uh, coming out of this preliminary stage is, um, tying in some of the details of the building to be more, um, evident of Chaska. Um, so there's a variety, variety of ways that that can be done and we have already started the conversation, um, with the applicants to really start to talk about some of those details that, uh, get brought in. Um, that could pertain to the color palette that's proposed, as well as the material makeup or some of the details that are, um, provided within the material applications themselves. Um, I think that's just one thing to further refine as they, uh, move on to, uh, final.
Is that, while, while you're on that drawing, is that right where your cursor is? Is that the only entrance from the outside? Everything is through there?
Correct. Yep, that's the main entrance point. There will be additional entry points from the covered stall area, but from the exterior, this is the main and only entrance point.
Fire was okay with the single entrance at grade level?
They did not provide any concerns with kind of what was laid out yet.
But there's other entrances and exits for like emergencies that are.
No, I'm not. I'm just talking, uh, about abilities to get to places quicker.
Okay.
You gotta go all through everything through there.
Yeah.
And, and you have, uh, you have emergency way back here.
Yeah.
Or stuff like that. So it's just one of them.
Sure.
Are there, uh, and it looks like we got someone coming up wanting to talk.
Yeah, they might be able to further expand on.
I just wanna make sure we are on the same page. My name's Josh McKinney, I'm with Measure Group, uh, a development consultant for the applicant. And I have Henry Eldersma, who's the architect. Can maybe address the question regarding access points?
Okay.
Yes, there's, there's two additional stair towers, um, also included that would have direct access to the surface parking in addition to that main entrance. So that's.
So there are other doors out there?
There's three facing the parking lot.
Okay. That, that's all I was.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
But that would be the main entrance for like visitors.
But that's your, still your main entrance?
Yeah.
Those would be keyed entrances for residents. Fire probably would have a key box there for, for access and stuff like that, so.
Exactly.
All right, thank you. Sorry, Liz.
Nope, that's okay. Um, just wanted to note their construction access plan, um, which would be all routed to Pioneer Trail, so they will put in some.
Is that that current curb cut where there's a, a barrier there? Is that where they're coming out?
Uh, the driveway access?
Yeah.
I believe so, yes. It completely aligns with that.
Right.
Yep. Um, so they will only be using Pioneer Trail as their entrance point and exit point for their construction, um, access. And they'll put signage up to further promote that during the cons, the construction season. Um, wanna get into, uh, the rezoning of this property. So again, as I mentioned before, it's, uh, being rezoned to a, a PRD, specifically PRD eighty-four. Um, as it relates to, um, how we've done this in the past, we have planned development districts within the city. We have PRDs, we have planned multi-use districts, PMDs, planned industrial districts, PIDs, uh, and PCDs for, uh, commercial districts. So it has been kind of the, the way of life, so to speak, in terms of, um, how we rezone specific properties, uh, within the city. Um, if it's a residential, um, type use, that's when it gets zoned to, uh, PRD more than likely. And really the intent of these planned development districts, which I've, um, have highlighted on this screen here. The intent of it is, uh, to put more emphasis on more flexible regulatory, uh, processes as compared to rather rigid, uh, development regulations. Uh, so what that does, it allows for both, uh, staff and the development team to work in a collaborative effort to plan and design, um, a product or an outcome that both, uh, parties can be, uh, in agreement to. And within that, um, the city establishes.
Maybe one quick thing with that too is, keep in mind that ordinances are minimums and you don't necessarily wanna design something to a minimum. You know, the, the whole concept behind a planned unit development is that you, you can look for opportunities from both sides so that you can come up with something that's better than a minimum.
Thank you, Matt. So again, one of the other intents is, uh, within kind of the regulations that are set forth, uh, from a project. It allows to, um, protect and preserve some valuable natural resources or amenities that may be, uh, specific to certain sites. So that's why we look at these on a case-by-case basis. We try to understand the natural characteristics of a site and really what the goals are of the project. And that's really the intent of these planned development districts is, allows that flexibility to understand the site and react to it and provide regulations based on such. So within our zoning code, um, it does list a set of development standards, uh, within the PRD zoning section, um, of the zoning ordinance. It talks about, um, lot coverage, FAR, which is Florida area ratio, um, common open space as well as, uh, building setbacks within that. Typically, uh, when we go through a rezoning, those, uh, standards are put in place, um, with the rezoning. Uh, but if we were to revert, uh, back to the standard development standards, um, that are within the PRD, um, foundational zoning. The lot coverage that's put in place for that is a twenty percent maximum. So that's how much the building is covering the total site area. For this site in particular, uh, the building does make up six point seven percent of the proposed, uh, total area, which is twelve acres in size. which is 12 acres in size. The Florida area ratio is a 0.5 maximum. And again, with the total site and what they're proposing, they are meeting a 0.27 Florida area ratio. And open space, we do have a couple sections of our code that speaks to this with multifamily, but reverting to the foundational PRD development standards, it requires 400 square feet per multifamily unit, which totals to 47,600 square feet required for this unit count. They are proposing an open space provision of 49,887, which also meets our usable open space requirements in a separate section of our special regulations code as well that we've referenced and have applied in other places more predominantly. In terms of the building setbacks, it's a very, just one value standpoint, it's a 30-foot requirement on all edges of a site. And that is where this site in particular is not meeting that requirement from a foundational perspective.
Well, I think it's important to understand two things. One of the things, I think it's important to provide some context of why Liz is going over this information. We received comments from a resident. They indicated that they felt that we were not making sure that these were being mapped. And so I wanted Liz to go through and make sure that she was going through to show that these things are being mapped. On the setback one is one that really gets to the idea of what type of setback you need from a building to the property line. Well, this property is significantly larger than what it needs to be for the building that's sized because there's a big wetland on the outside of it. Right now, it's owned by one property owner, so they can set those property lines wherever they want to. And then we basically take the additional areas of wetland and we preserve it. That's what we gather our stormwater fees and stuff. So under our regulations, it says there's a 30-foot setback. You'll see in the plans that there's not a recommended 30-foot setback in here because we don't think it's a good idea for a private entity to own these wetlands long-term. We think it's better that the city owns them and we maintain them based on our standards going into the future and that we treat all of them exactly the same. So we could go and say, well, yeah, they can meet their setbacks, but we think that's a bad idea. Because if they do, then we're giving up some of that wetland that we think we should be preserving. So one of the things that's required under our ordinance to meet that setbacks is a variance. And so you'll see in the final, we're actually going to recommend that there's a variance for the setbacks, and it's primarily so we keep ownership of all that wetland because we want to be the ones that preserve that.
Liz, can you bring one of those pictures up? It's very clear in that picture after Matt explaining what we're talking about here. Because-
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure there was context behind it because you might look and say, why are we talking about this?
So if you look on that, what I'll call the north side at the top of the screen, that's the retention pond there for stormwater, and the property line's right there. So that's the part where they, actually, the whole site, they could take that property line, move it out. Then we could ask for an easement to get access for cleaning of that pond, but that, like Matt says, that's not the way we want to do it.
We want to own that stuff.
We want to own it.
Because ultimately, we want to make sure that we control how these wetlands and ponds are maintained.
So that's the line that's in question about meeting the setback. Because I questioned that, how could this big of a site have a setback issue? And so that makes complete sense there now. And I think what we're doing and asking for the variance is absolutely the right thing to do.
And so-
Go ahead.
So the ordinance is 30 feet or is it the greater of the height of the building?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Sorry, I probably wasn't very clear on that.
So I think actually this one was 25 feet?
No, it's 30-
It was 30?
It's 30 feet or it's the height of the building, whichever is greater.
Okay.
So the height of the building is-
Is 45 feet.
45. So in this case, technically, the setback is a variance from 45 feet is what we're looking for.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So just to help frame that, hypothetically, where's 40? Could you move your mouse approximately like 45 feet from the north property line?
Probably right about here.
Kind of like mid-side. If we were going by height, right, put it about there.
Yep.
And of course, that would change a lot of the geometry of like everything inside and a lot of stuff, you know?
Again, if the objective was to have the setback, the developer can achieve that with their current site design. It would just be moving-
He wouldn't shorten his building.
No, he just moved the property line.
Yeah, I got, that was the clarification. I want to make sure we got it on the record.
And I think we're looking at trying to create a site that's going to function the best for all parties involved in the future, acknowledging that there's a stormwater pond adjacent to this site.
And I think that's the intent of, you know, sometimes we sort of, we are one of the only cities that uses PUDs for almost everything. But I would argue that we've been able to accomplish better developments in town because of that, because of the fact that we look at not what does the minimum of the ordinance say, but what's best? You know, what's best for what's happening out here? And it would not be to me in the public's best interest to have, you know, to have property that we should be maintaining owned by a private entity. And so the PUD and going through this process allows us to negotiate those things so that we can come up with something that's good for the developer, but it's also good for the community, too.
Okay. Now you can go back to your-
Sorry, I didn't mean to-
I keep throwing you for a loop. No, but I'm sure there's some confusion what we're doing there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just had a couple more points kind of related to that topic. So we've set forth an ordinance in front of you known as the PRD 84 zoning district, ordinance number 1016. So within that, it sets the regulatory language that's applicable only to the Clover Ridge Apartments site. And that pertains to the graphic documents that kind of lay out the site, as well as the design of the building. The permitted uses are laid out within that, the accessory uses, the building setbacks, a max building height, and the disposition of the outlots on the site. So within that, you know, based on kind of what is being laid out in front of us, the proposed setbacks would be a 20-foot setback from the east side of Clover Ridge Drive right-of-way, a 10-foot setback on the north side adjacent to the property line that abuts the stormwater pond. And again, these setbacks are taken from other precedents of similar projects. So the 20-foot setback is equivalent to the same setback we applied at Pioneer Vista, which is right across the street. So they also had a 20-foot right-of-way setback from Clover Ridge Drive. The 10-foot setback on the north side is what we need, the building to be setback from that stormwater ponding area for us to have enough space around that pond. And then the big exception is on the west and south sides. They are showing a variating or variable setback between 35 feet up to 70 feet on those edges. And that's primarily to provide the necessary buffer requirements for the wetlands along those edges. Because these are more unique wetlands that we see compared to other wetlands in town or in the city. So there are some buffer requirements that they are meeting on those edges, which makes this site a little bit more unique compared to most, given the quality of the wetlands that they abut. And just to give you kind of an understanding of context and kind of what's been applied in other previous projects, more so kind of in the surrounding area here, the Clover Ridge neighborhood just to the south of this site, you would see a variety of setbacks within that development. And that's due to the different housing styles, the different densities that are proposed within the development. So we see a variety of setbacks ranging from anywhere from a zero lot line setback up to a 30-foot lot line setback. And again, that was kind of based on the type of product or project that was being proposed and what it was being approved for. And then again, touching on the adjacent Townhome project just to the northeast of this one, did also show that 20-foot setback from the right-of-way limits. So just to give you a little bit of context out there in terms of previous other projects. So a couple things to work on for final. As I mentioned, we'll be working with the developer to really hone in on some details of the building and material and colors and so forth so that it really encompasses the context in which it's locating within Chaska. And then as well as working on that setback variance that we just previously discussed. So in conclusion, we are asking to make two motions this evening. One to adopt resolution number 2022-43, which would be approving the preliminary site and building plan and preliminary plat for the Clover Ridge Apartments. And then based on the conditions listed within that document. And then a motion to adopt ordinance number 1016, which would be approving the rezoning to PRD 84. Happy to answer any questions. We do have the development team here as well to help answer questions.
Right. Questions for Liz or the development team? How did I do? How did I do? Hey, can I do better?
Yeah.
See, you're not paying attention.
I am, but looking up something, geez.
Questions for anyone?
I have the impossible question that we may not know. Just more curious.
Sorry, that wasn't in the-
Well, maybe, maybe someone will surprise me. What is our, for apartment complexes in Chaska, what's our vacancy rate? Like how it's-
It's low.
I mean, I'm sure, again, there's demand, you're doing research. I'm just more curious.
Oh, somebody's moving.
Yeah. Someone probably did market research to get the answer. I'm just curious.
We think actually it's currently right around 3%.
Okay.
So a very, very low, as you mentioned, from a vacancy standpoint.
Right. In Chaska, we're at 3%?
Correct, yeah.
For market rate.
For market rate housing.
So what's like the median, what's like the median market rate this right now?
Uh, just in terms of the metro?
Just metro.
Generally, what I'm hearing is between 5 and 7%. So.
Yeah, that's why we're, that's why we're seeing a high demand for apartment units in Chaska is because we have a very low vacancy rate.
Yeah, I'm just glad you knew. I figured someone would know because you-
Yes, absolutely.
You clearly did some market research to make sure this was a good investment, right? So, but yeah, I'm just curious because, you know, we've, we're seeing a couple apartment complexes come through the process and, you know, sometimes people don't know that question if they're not actively looking for apartments, right, or know that, know the situation.
There's a high demand.
Yep. Yep.
They certainly don't want to overbuild them and not fill them.
Yep.
Yeah.
Right, any other questions? I, you know, I think we've hit a lot through the process here.
You know, I'm going to just throw it to our legal because the question got asked. So I feel like it's a good opportunity that you don't get to participate too often.
That's a good thing, by the way.
It is a good thing, but, you know, you're here, you know, the email that brought up some of those questions about those ordinances specifically said, hey, you know, what's the city attorney think about? So I'll throw that opportunity to you to comment if you have such a comment. Or we'll-
Thank you, Councilmember McGraw. I think it's adequately and accurately analyzed the application and the city zoning ordinance. You know, variance is a tool that's well-suited to accommodate these unique situations where you do have practical difficulties with a site. It's a highly unique area with the curved road, the railroad, and the wetland. So if that answers your question, I'll full stop and I can elaborate if you'd like.
That's fine. I'm happy with that. Thank you.
Right, I don't, I don't know that I have anything. I think we've-
I did have one quick question. So I noticed that there's a path that enters in the parking lot and then we use all the way to the back where the patio is, comes all the way back over to there. Why not, why not create a shortcut? Because someone says, well, I want to connect to the other, you know, the others, you know, the trail system or whatever. Why wouldn't they just have?
Well, I-
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I understand, but it's cool to have that loop over there, but if someone wants to kind of take the-
I think it's elevation.
Yeah, it's actually very much related to grade, actually. So down to, so what we're actually really trying to do here is use the wetland as an amenity. We think it's actually a really cool and unique setting for an apartment building, an opportunity that's not actually often found within the metro. So what we're trying to do is kind of work with the city to protect the wetlands and create a kind of a riparian buffer that we get an opportunity to actually walk through and kind of experience, which is just, like I said, it's very rare in terms of our ability to kind of construct that kind of wetland buffer and then also be able to walk through it. Now, I think we can continue to look through to see if there might be some options for us to include some steppers to create that. It's just from accessibility pathway-wise, this is the best way to-
I was going to say, from a resident's standpoint, do they want to go and run the trail? They'll just go out to parking lot?
Yeah.
Cut across and get on the trail and they're off.
I think the other thing to keep in mind is that sidewalk or the path that's in front of it is the regional trail. And so it's used a ton. And I actually, there's, there's actually a section, when we talk about that apartment building to the south, where there's actually been the trail that's connected up to the apartment site that, you know, is meant to be sort of the original trail, but getting it down to the wetland. This sort of gets at, you know, you know, what that was trying to accomplish is to get people down to nature in there. You know, I realize this will all be private property, but I guarantee you that people are from the neighborhood are going to use this as a loop to go down into because they use that section that's by the wetland right now. It's beautiful down there.
It's also elevation, the same reason why you couldn't just continue to wrap the other side of the building instead of making kind of that loop there.
They don't own that side.
Yeah, yeah, also the city owns that, yeah. That's, so that's, that's actually absolutely correct. So it's one of the reasons, it's a city-owned property. And then also, one of the things that's a bit unique here is that there's, as Liz mentioned, there's kind of two different classifications of wetlands. The most unique being kind of on the southerly side of our building and kind of the more normal or regular wetland being more northerly. And so what happens there is the wetland setback shrinks pretty significantly, and so what we're trying to do is not grade within that wetland buffer that does exist, which a trail would necessitate some, at least potential grading in that location.
I think it's just a nice little leisurely-
One, if you want to get a sense of what it'll feel like, take that trail that comes off of, at the end of Hunter Mark Road, at the very end of Hunter Mark Road, keep on going down that hill, trail, it's exactly what it's going to feel like because it's just beautiful.
Okay. All right, anyone else why you standing there?
I think the only-
Go ahead.
The only thing, I mean, I know this is going to get said, you're going to have families with children in here. I know you're marketing to millennials and empty nesters.
You got it.
I get that, but you're not going to always rent to just those folks, right? The park, I get, but that's also Jonathan Association, so that's, that's their park. And then the community park is pretty far from there. Is there anything that could be done to accommodate smaller children?
Yeah, so this is a question that came up at Planning Commission, so, and forgive me, I forgot to mention it. We are at least going to be looking into the possibility of adding a small tot lot on site. Certainly something we're going to be taking back to with our leasing team and trying to determine, you know, what the use has been on other properties in this type of development, just to see kind of what they said. Would bring that information back to council.
Appreciate that.
Of course.
Yeah, no, I think that that would be another added amenity, and I think it, I mean, to me, it looks like you've got area to do it. It's not like some places that you, you know, you just know where to go with it, but that is an option. Now, do, is a building like this become part of the Jonathan Association? There's no-
I don't know.
It's outside of the boundaries of the association.
I think that railroad track is-
Yeah, the railroad track is-
Railroad track is the border.
Yep.
Okay. I mean, I didn't know if apartment buildings or how they would fall into-
Well, they do. I mean, there's plenty of apartment buildings that do, but this one is, is north of that border.
Okay. We got, again, it sounds like questions are pretty well wrapped up. I'm going to move forward and say we have, well, I know we have residents here. Does anyone want to speak? A couple residents here? Okay. Kind of forgot about that.
Hi, my name's Ray Leonard again. Of course, you know, I'm the governor of Reserve Lane in Chaska. I just wanted to say with this development, I'm here tonight, staying later because my first issue got off the plate. first issue got off the plate, but Commissioner Dolke said no one showed up at the other, at the Planning Commission to visit and talk about the impacts of this on the neighborhood. So, I wanted to come tonight because I wasn't able to be there for that, that one. And just reinforce with you, the notification process on these things, 350 feet from where this apartment is, hardly anybody got the notification. I don't know how many, I know you said there was notifications that went out to a fair number of people, but not many people get it. So, I don't know, I know you talked about that last time we were here, and that there were things you were looking at, sign age at the sites, whatever. With more information, I would suggest that would be a good idea on something like this. Now, too, some concerns I have related to this, this specific development. Matt mentioned that the, that trail is used a lot, and I agree. I use it almost every day, my, my kids use it every day, they ride their bikes, they run, they do everything. The setback here to the trail looks very narrow and doesn't look like there's much buffer from the trail to where the building's going to be in order to do any kind of planting to keep the natural feel of that, of that regional trail in place, so that when you are using the trail, you don't feel like you're running down the side of somebody's apartment building and waving at them while they're making dinner, right? So, this is Chaska, this is what we want to do. We want to have a nature-plus-development-type approach, and I think we need to really look at how far that setback is so that you can plant some decent-sized trees in there, and it feels like you're still in the country, even though you're putting a massive apartment complex in. I mean, very big building, four stories tall, right? Which really doesn't fit the, the feel of the neighborhood too much. We've got the big four-story buildings in Clover Preserve by the school, but they're surrounded by high-density residential also with the townhouses, and then it levels out to smaller houses, townhomes, single-family homes, going out towards County 11 out there, right? And up to Pioneer Trail. This kind of breaks that up. The two apartment complexes being proposed really breaks that up and turns us into another big residential area that I think we're missing an opportunity to, to maintain kind of the feel of what it is. When you look at this plan, it has a big flat roof on it, and if you're coming in from, I don't know what the sightline's going to be when you turn from Pioneer Trail coming down, which I turn that every day, I use that route to come home every day. And it's one of the most beautiful parts of Chaska, in my opinion. You come down Pioneer Trail, past the golf course, and you turn in, and you have all the trees, especially in the fall, it's a very beautiful area. And now, you're going to turn, and you're going to see, I think, the one big flat wall of the apartment building when you come down the hill. That's what you're going to see when you enter Chaska, and you're probably going to see onto the roof of it, because that's a pretty big hill coming down there. I don't know how much your sightline's going to be. And this building is a totally flat roof, and all the utilities and everything will be up there on top. And that's the first thing you're going to see about Chaska, when you come in from that beautiful side of the city. And I think that's a miss. I think the, the building's a flat-roof building. I think the one that was proposed south of the railroad tracks is going to have some steeples on it or different architectural components to break it up a little bit and give it some, some structure. I think that would be a good idea here, too, and to make it feel like more of a community. You're never going to make a four-story apartment complex feel like it fits in out there, but I don't know necessarily, other than townhomes, what you could put in there that would, would use that property with the railroad tracks coming in on both sides. I mean, it's a tough piece of land to develop, I don't disagree with that. But I think we, as Chaska, can do better with how we're planning this, to put in more opportunities to keep the feel of nature rather than having it just be, you know, road, path, building, which is what it feels like when I see these plans, but I don't know the setback that's there. So, to me, it needs to be, I mean, if you take a pine tree and you plant it. That's my.
I'm going, who's calling?
I don't know what that is, sorry about that. But if you take a pine tree like I have in my yard, I planted them 16 feet back from Clover Preserve Drive, because I needed to leave them off of the sidewalk, right? So, when they grew, I wanted them 16 feet, they have to have 16 feet in order to grow. I don't think you're going to get more than one row of trees in here, and you're not going to be able to stagger them with the setback that appears to be on there from the road. And I think you definitely, like I said, lose a big opportunity to keep that feel of nature as you're using that trail, and how can you shield this building as you're coming down the hill and make it feel more like Chaska versus a big apartment complex sitting there? And I don't know if there's anything that can be done with the building design, but having that huge flat wall, which I think is facing north on this drawing, is that right?
Yep.
That's the only thing you're going to see when you make that corner and you come down the hill. It's just a big flat wall there. I first thought, when I saw this plan, that the angled part was facing north, and you'd come down, and that flat wall would be facing the wetlands, but it's not. I see this chart here today, and I think there's a big opportunity there to kind of break that up if you look at the recite, recite, which is probably not what these guys want to hear, but it's my opinion. So, I'll give you what I think are some of the key problems with this. I think there was some pretty big, you know, dissent on the Planning Council on some of this stuff, too, but it got approved and it moved forward. So, I'm not necessarily in a disagreement with the apartment complex, I just think we, as a, or city, need to do what we can to make this feel like it's not just a big old apartment building that we just flopped in there, right? And looking at how the angles of the building work, how the trees are going to work, what are the, how are you going to shield that trail when people are biking and walking so that I'm not walking next to a big building all the time? Would feel, would be something that I think would be very helpful. And I do agree, I don't know who said it, but why can't you loop the trail around down past that pond that you had in there, so that you could actually use the trail and go down in there and enjoy it? Because I use that trail a lot, too. I wish it wasn't a dead end. I wished for 20 years it wasn't a dead end, but, because it's a very beautiful area to go, and if we could make that a community asset, I think that's another big opportunity. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Well, the only thing that I would comment on that is, is that, the, the good thing is, is the trail, it's only a short segment of the building that you're going by close to the trail. I get you, I, I, I get your point, but it's not that long alongside. And as I look at, look at this plan, there are certain elements of architect that looks like, I'm assuming that it's, it's patios and different things that break up that side. So, it's not like looking at a giant flat wall, or is some architectural features built into it.
Yeah, my, my statement, just so if I can comment back, my statement is more about the amount of space you have between the trail and the start of the parking lot, the start of the, the facility itself. How can you put more space there to allow a couple layers of trees to be planted to make it feel like you're walking through a forest more so than a big apartment building's parking lot? And I think we owe it to the community to try to do that, so, thanks.
Good, thanks.
You know, one thing I will point out about the setbacks out here, and I think it's important to understand, sort of, you know, this is, the Clover Ridge neighborhood was, was first conceived and designed back in 2001, and the whole concept of the neighborhood was a new urbanist development. And so, as you go through the development as a whole, there was a lot of different objectives that were trying to be accomplished to that, different types of housing, different price points, you know, you know, houses that could be affordable, houses that you could move up into, that you had rental opportunities, that you had a school in the center of the neighborhood, that was designed to feel more urban than, because it was trying to mimic downtown Chaska. It was trying to mimic the fact that in downtown Chaska, you have houses and porches that are right up to sidewalks, and that you don't have big setbacks back. That was sort of the whole concept of that neighborhood. And so, as you look at the other buildings and apartments throughout the, the neighborhood, they do have a more urban feel to them. These apartments themselves were actually part of the original approvals that were done back, way back when, and so there was more of a, a, a new urbanist, urbanist sort of design that was part of the entire neighborhood. So, it's, it's not, there is context to, to, you know, why what's being proposed is being proposed.
I think that's fair that that's the history, but at the same token, times have changed a little bit.
They have, but, you know, I think it's important to understand, because the rest of the neighborhood is designed that way.
Sure.
And so, how do you keep, how do you keep the context of the neighborhood so you don't have things that don't, that feel out of place?
I think one of the things that's challenged me from kind of like, even the, the master planning, is that there's, you know, as, as Ray was describing, it's like there's this core, that's a very dense core, and it progressively becomes less dense as it gets away from that core, kind of like that downtown feel. But then, there's these kind of pockets that are high densities, two of them, right? There's one south and one north of the railroad tracks that are kind of adjacent to like wetland and open area, which seemed always kind of a little discordant.
But they're, they're directly across the street from the higher-density townhomes that connect up to the apartment.
I think another thing that, you know, to consider, too, is that one approach that Chaska's had, and I think it's been very successful in its multifamily development, is putting it in places of high quality. Because, as the developer was talking about, that offers up unique opportunities that you don't see elsewhere. And long, in the longevity of the property, its ability to command, you know, rents, and which then drives the maintenance and the upkeep of it, is improved with that as well.
I mean, I don't mean to pick on Shakopee, but Shakopee's sort of notorious for, you look at the 169 corridor, and they use all the affordable housing, their talent, to basically create the barrier between single-family homes and the highway. You know, the, the concept of this neighborhood is how do you create as many nice opportunities for the, you know, for people who may not be able to afford to move into a house, to be able to, you know, have the, you know, be part of those, those areas that aren't just for multifamily, that they're for single-family, and that you have mixtures of incomes.
And I don't disagree with having a mixture of income or having, you know, variety of different housing types and products within the same community. I think the question is, is that in today's context, you know, residents have this experience of, wow, there's this beautiful, you know, kind of pastoral land that's still, you know, relatively untouched, and then now there's this jarring thing that's coming in, because, I mean, you look at the houses, okay, there may be like kind of medium density across the street, but the perception is that, hey, this is like this very open sort of pastoral land that's there, that suddenly it becomes a very urban land that feels really jarring, because there's nothing next to that on the other side of the street that's adjacent to it, that's kind of, you know, delineating, or this kind of like smoothing that out, so to speak. So.
But I think the concept is, is to provide just as nice of amenities to people who are living in apartments as single-family homes. That's the concept behind it, is so that you're providing those types of opportunities, not just to people who can afford it, but to, to everybody in the community to have some type of opportunity to have that type of a view out their backyard.
Can I just add one? So, I, I walked over here yesterday, and the townhomes that are across the street are three stories, sort of, I'm all four-story apartment building.
Sure. I think the question isn't so much of the, I mean, I guess where I'm going with it is that there's, there's definitely like kind of, what we're kind of looking at is that there's a difference in perception of what's there today versus what's going to be there tomorrow. And I think that part of it's also the concern that this is also looking at architectural style, it's also a very new, very modern style versus what's existing Clover Ridge, too. In addition to that, that's also, you know, just a different architectural era, a different period, so to speak. And I think that that's also kind of adds that sort of jarringness of it, that, you know, it's, like, if you look at Jonathan Flats, Jonathan Flats is kind of off on its own a little bit. It's, you know, it's kind of has trees and stuff separating it from like the next development over, which is actually kind of mirrors a, kind of a different neighborhood style. And then, there's Jonathan Square, which is, you know, kind of a much older style. So, it's kind of a, a little weird mix in there. This one, there's kind of this, everything was kind of built since like the 2000s, more of that common style, and then there's one thing that's very modern sticking out there. I think that probably also adds.
Those townhomes are brand-new there.
Well, they are, but they're, but they're all, well, they're still under construction, they're, I mean, some of them are, but they're following the same footprint as the ones that were previously built, so I, I wouldn't say that they're.
But I mean, they're not, I mean, it's not like they're built in the 70s.
No, no, no. But I guess the difference is, I mean, but if you look at the townhouses, it's not like, you know, it's not like there's a completely different architectural look to, I mean, they're, you know, most townhouses built between, let's say, the 90s to now, don't necessarily look hugely different, right? It's not like this very modernist, flat-top roofs and things like that. I think that probably adds to the, sort of, the jarring nature of this.
I'm not sure, because Jonathan Flats is flat-roofed.
Well, that's the, but he's talking about townhomes. He's talking about the townhomes.
Yeah, and I, I don't disagree with Jonathan Flats, but Jonathan Flats is also adjacent to a strip mall, it's flat roof, and then the other side of it, there's like this tree barrier between that and the next apartment building.
Keep in mind, if you put a gable roof on a building, you're putting another story, you're going to be a five-story building instead of a four-story building.
I mean, that's.
I, I mean, I think that anytime you're going to have buildings that look different, they're built at different times.
Yeah.
You have five brand-new homes in the middle of downtown Chaska that's 100 years old. It's going to be, it's going to happen.
But here's the thing, if you build in downtown Chaska, though, there's also, there's also on the standard to like, you've got to make it fit within downtown Chaska's, like.
I doubt those houses are going to fit, but I'm just saying, like, unless you pop up all the buildings at the same time, they're going to look different.
Yeah, but.
I mean, I, I guess that, what's, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that, you know, at least trying to style it so it at least seems to blend in a little better than what it does today, because right now, it's, I mean, it is, it, you know, it's like, it's, you know, if you look at like across the street, show me like what are the black-colored buildings, right? You know, across the street.
Well, that is one of the requirements, or that's one of the conditions.
That was one of the things they wanted to.
Exactly. Right, and I know Liz was talking about that earlier in the, in the earlier part of it, yeah.
So, we're, Liz mentioned it, but we're certainly going to be engaging with city staff to kind of write, you know, get the architecture to a spot where, you know, staff is more comfortable to bring it back, kind of can blend in a little bit more with context. But I think just one item I did want to point, kind of hit on is that we did make a conscious choice to do a flat roof on this site, just simply to avoid such a significant height and visual barrier here. Additionally, just while I'm up here, I guess, I just wanted to address one thing, so that kind of the landscape buffer from the trail, it's, he has a good comment, you know, and certainly something we'll take back to our landscape architecture team and make sure that we are able to provide the best buffer possible between that small leg of the building and the trail. With regards to the kind of longer elevation that is visible when we're coming off of Pioneer Trail, I mean, I guess, you know, we looked at, I think staff can probably attest, we've looked at this site probably four or five different ways, and really were constrained in terms of the kind of iterations that we could make that would work with the wetland areas and kind of get all that grading to fit. In fact, we had actually looked at a scenario that had the entire length of Clover Ridge kind of as the primary kind of axis of the building, so they would have had a, you know, let's just say 20-foot buffer off of that trail at that point in time for that entire length to get the majority of our units, rather than to try to wrap this thing into the wetland a little bit more. So, I understand the concern, and I, and certainly will take the, kind of the buffering and kind of the layered landscape desire back to our team and give us a chance to kind of improve the plans. I appreciate the comment.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Because I, I think the other thing we got to factor in on this is, once you get past the wetlands there, that's developable land at some point, and that's going to change that whole, it's like a lot of it, it looks really, it's really nice to have it there, but we don't own it, we don't know what's going to happen there in the future either.
Well, I think that in the master, on the comp, or was it, on the comprehensive plan, it's just those, those areas, and then it's agricultural is what it's planned for outside of that, is that correct? So, across the wetland, as you're heading westward.
That would be the Kelsar Farm.
Yep. There's the Kelsar Farm, there's a portion of it that is guided for single-family. As you continue westward, you do get to the Kelsar Farm, which is basically, you know, preserved. Because, because there's like the two different plots, the one that we're looking at, and then the one to the south, you know, a little further down the road, are the two high densities. But then, and the plots where the, the pieces immediately to the west of those are considered agricultural based on the comp plan. And then, but then you end up going to, you know, the development we just looked at And then, but then you end up going to, you know, the development we just looked at on both sides, on the southern one. So, yep.
Yep.
The northern one, there's nothing yet, but it's planned for agricultural and then single family.
Yes.
Yep.
Any other comments, questions for anyone?
Yes, sir.
Travis Olson, 1439 Sofia Drive, same comment, which was, there's no audience for the planning commission, so making sure there's somebody here as well too. There was a statement saying there's a precedent with Pioneer Point being a 20-foot setback just up the road on, on Clover Ridge Drive. I'd like to understand, is that just the corner of one unit breaking that or was it the whole flat side of the two townhomes that are built next to Clover Ridge Drive? Because I believe it's just one unit that's encroaching into that setback. So I, I would like to, and we talked about, we don't know what's going to be developed in between the railroad tracks and Pioneer Trail. Don't concede on the setback of only 20 feet because we're setting the precedent for that that's going to be going onto the north side as well too. So I would really recommend that we don't, they have the ability to cut the building short. I mean, so they're obviously pushing the boundaries as into what's allowed. This is the opportunity to be able to say, let's pull it back a little bit. Don't push the boundaries and extend that even more and also allow more room for landscaping this off in the blow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is that the south side you were talking?
I think it's the edge that's close to the road. Because the edge, edge is close to the road that you were referring to, right?
For this one, yes.
Yeah, for this.
Where at Pioneer Point, there, the townhouse has kind of come around the loop in Clover Ridge Drive and turned, so it's, that's where I believe.
Maybe I'm not understanding, but I mean, I'm looking at the L U V shape, I don't know what shape you want to call that. It wouldn't be, the whole building wouldn't encroach on that 20 feet either. It would just be that northern side, similar to that townhome example at, at the point.
But the townhome is rectangle and they had to set it that way in the plot. This one, you can shave off the building.
We can't hold a conversation because they can't hear it.
Yep. Understood. Thank you. Yep.
All right, anyone else?
Here we do have someone on Zoom here.
Oh, okay.
BS iPhone is also there, David Rehnes.
Hi, I apologize, this is Beth Sanchez, again, my laptop died earlier. I am on Sofia Drive as well, and again, just speaking up and agreeing with what the other two commentators said, because there was like the planning commission as well. The comments that were made there was that nobody was speaking up, so it must be, must be an okay project. And I just wanted to reiterate what I said there as well about the apartment complex coming into the south of the railroad tracks. It goes for this one as well, and that was, I was at a city council meeting with the D R R Development and at one point in time, there was a comment that was made about the Kelsner property and wanting to preserve that as an historical site so that maybe people coming in to Chaska had, you know, the aesthetics of that property and, and the look and feel of that as they were coming into Chaska in that direction. And I would just like to say that I understand that we do need affordable housing and I, I agree with wanting to provide, you know, the opportunities that I have to, the views that I have with my background for others as well. But it, it just, I agree with the comments that were made that it doesn't fit, it doesn't fit as it is right now. I'm guessing you're probably going to be able to see some of the topics of this building from the Kelsner Farm and the, the comment of trying to preserve that historical farm, farm site in combination with the building as it is proposed right now, they're just, they don't, they don't mix, they don't go together. I just ask that, that it be looked at, the, the height of this building as four stories and just be considered and thought about once, once this is put in. We can't take this back. This is a very beautiful property that I utilize, my family does as well, year round in the winter as well. And it's, it's going to be kind of sad as we can go, but I also understand why. I just hope that it's all taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thoughts?
So I walked, like I, like I had mentioned before, I, I walked the area because I, I really wanted to see kind of relational aspect of where the land was in aspect to some of the neighbors that had raised concerns in the planning commission meeting. I mean, it is a rural's plot at this point and there's not a lot, but I want to just clarify, the Kelsner property, we're talking about the farm site itself, right?
Yeah, the Kelsner, I wanted to clarify that. The Kelsner property that's being preserved is not the stuff adjacent to the site. It's the stuff up at Pioneer Trail and County Road 11. So it's quite a ways from this site.
Yeah, so I just, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, but I understand that change is really difficult and apartment is a big change. It's a really big change. As I walked in that area, a little bit of comfort in the sense was that the townhomes across the street were already three stories with a pitched roof. Yes, I didn't take pictures of them, but I feel personally, and I understand that others may not feel the same way, that this apartment complex, well, it's going to look different than the rows of townhomes that are generally across the street, they're not going to be a terrible difference in height from one another because of the three stories versus the four stories. But I understand that maybe, maybe the way that I feel might feel differently. Others might feel differently. I think that the developers here are listening and have a lot of feedback to kind of make things different and, and more pleasing and better. I guess those are my initial thoughts. I also weigh out the idea, I don't necessarily consider this to be, sorry, affordable housing in the sense of, you know, they're market rate apartments. That's something to be said, but at the same time, I, I weigh out, you know, what is, what does the community need at this moment? And I know the community needs apartments. I hear it all the time, I see it all the time. And while I have opinions about what market rate rent should be at, personally, I know that they're very much desired and I understand that putting them anywhere is, is a difficult decision, the impact that it has on surrounding neighbors. But I feel in this sense with this particular, a lot of apartment plot being north of the railroad tracks and everything, that it's not necessarily in a terrible spot. I, I understand that other people feel differently, but that's just how I feel.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I think that, you know, overall, there's, there's definitely a need for this housing, right? I mean, that's, that's first and foremost, but at the same token, I think there's, there are techniques in the architectural toolbox to mitigate some of the feel of it because I, you know, you know, I think that there is, there is a big difference between actual architectural height versus perceived massing and perceived architectural height. Now, there's things you can do from a design perspective to minimize that feel of the architectural height, so I'm, you know, I'm, I'm going to ask that you're going to do everything you can to like reduce that feel because I understand that townhouses as well, you know, so there's a third story because of that gabled roof or the pitched roof is that the reality is that the perception of height is significantly different because of the massing of the building. So, you know, so my, so my request is like, you know, do what you can between that and also to try to make it more cohesively tied with some of the architectural elements around. Because I think that, you know, we look at like, you know, whether we do industrial buildings or, industrial is probably a little more of the exception there because industrial is just industrial, right? But you try to do like more retail buildings or, you know, other homes, they always try to be a little conscious of the neighborhood that they're in. Like when we were developing the, the multifamily units that are just north of where, north of where Jonathan Flats is, those buildings all sort of kind of looked at that as a neighborhood and said, okay, well, what's there today and how can we kind of at least be similar to what's nearby? So at least it doesn't feel too jarring because there's woods on the other side, so we just don't really have to mind what's over there, but at least those three buildings are all kind of look like they're that same neighborhood. So anything we can do to kind of make it feel like it's part of that community, like it's been around for a while, would be, would probably be more welcome if that, from that perspective. And also anything that would help embrace that, that trail and embrace the, the landscaping in front is, you know, whether shaving off a few units on the front there or even getting a little creative and making like a, a candelivered set of units over that or something that, you know, could provide something unique and different, could be, could be a really interesting asset there. But like I said, you know, I'll leave it to you and city staff to try to figure that out, but I'm hoping and expecting that you'll come back to table something that will, you know, address some of these things and hopefully make the residents, make the residents, you know, satisfied or happy.
I, I really don't, I mean, oh, oh, sorry.
Can I just make one correction to Councilmember Hubbard? Right across from this apartment, there is no.
You're right.
The three stories are south of the railroad track on the other apartment that you're going to have to deal with eventually.
Yes, I know, I know. I looked at all of it, I'm sorry. And, and I mean, I guess I was just talking about general vicinity in that area, just with the style of homes that are nearby. Because Sofia Drive is obviously the next residential street on the other side, but there is a, a large wetland that, you know, the reserve that's, you know, buffering those, those properties.
But there is no development across the street from this, so that's part of my concern with the trail and the setback and creating that nature environment up along that road to keep that feeling like a nature environment, even though we're going to put an apartment building in there, which I'm not adverse to the apartment building, honestly, I got, I got a mom, I got a mom and a dad and, and people that might want to move in there someday, right? So that'd be great, but what we can do to keep that would.
And I appreciate your, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Linder. I think, as you were making your comments earlier, I was watching you and I was also watching the developer behind you and they were taking notes. I think looking at that, looking at the engagement and seeing that they really want to make things look and feel the best that they're going to look, I, I implore them to, and I think they will do their due diligence to do that. Also just, I forgot to mention it, you know, I walked all of Clover Ridge back in 2019 and I'll just attest to Matt's point or in regards to just the diverse, the diversified housing in that neighborhood is, it's so rich and beautiful and I understand that, you know, they may have heavy traffic flows on certain streets and there might be things like that with the school and everything with heavy pickup times, but I just think, just in terms of being able to live in one type of house when you first move in and being able to move to another house or something along those lines and kind of stay within the same neighborhood, stay within the same circle of friends and family that you've developed, that says something about our community. And I think that while, I know apartments are very difficult, I think it says something to us to welcome an apartment into this community and embrace them like, Mr. Linder came up and said that, you know, hopefully, you know, nature and it will look good, but, you know, it's not, it's not a horrible idea. And I appreciate that because I think that that's, that welcoming aspect of things is what makes our, us live our, you know, motto of this best small town. So just want to mention that.
All right. Because I, I too was out there Saturday, I think I was out there. I'm trying to remember what is sitting there.
It's, it's a big, it's a big wetland for the townhomes there in north.
Okay.
Or the, not wetland, the pond.
The pond.
Because I keep getting the Romeo area and that's where the apartments are, south of Romeo.
Yep.
But it, and there's still, there is that, that size of a building within real close proximity, I guess is, so it's not totally out of place where it was all single family. So, okay. All right, we, where I think we're at a point where again, we're at, we'd have two things to do. We'd have a resolution for the preliminary and then the rezoning. Right? Yes, rezoning. Thoughts?
Well.
Preferences?
I will make a motion to adopt.
We want 20, 22-43.
Yep. Adopt resolution 2022-43.
I know, it's not easy to say.
It's really hard. Second.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Hubbard, second by Councilmember Hatfield, and this is adopting resolution 2022-43, which is approving preliminary site and building plans. And I'll just pass on, you took a lot of notes and, and hopefully take comments in, in the, as you plan forward, so. So again, we have a motion to second. Comments? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Now we would be doing a motion to adopt ordinance 1016, which is zoning from our rural to PRD 84.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Grau to, again, that's 2016 and moving from rural to PRD 84. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good night. All right, we move to item 8F, adopt resolution 2022-46, which is a concept plan for a north water treatment plant.
Now, Mayor Councilmember, I want to remind you that this is the applicant that you need to be the hardest on of anybody in the entire room.
I mean, I haven't hardly seen him. He's here twice in.
Face the day.
Twice in two days. Thanks, Mike.
All right, Mayor Councilmember, as you are aware that we've talked through, through a few budgeting processes, we are planning for needing one smaller water treatment plant to treat the water coming out of well number seven, which is behind the Cub Foods on Hunter Mark Road, and also an additional well that will be up in that area. This is needed both to meet our ultimate capacity for water in the community and primarily because when the, the original water treatment plant was built, well number seven, even though it's a high production well, it was very difficult to get that connection down to the water treatment plant to actually treat it. And so we only use it for emergency situations to be able to put into our water supply if we have really low water because of a hot day or something to, to that effect. So long-term, you know, the DNR really pushes us, instead of going out and doing new wells to try to utilize what we have so that we conserve as much water as possible. And so we did determine that our best opportunity was to do a smaller secondary water treatment plant to meet those needs. Now, part of that process, just like every other applicant that, that puts up a building is we need to go through our own process to make sure that we meet our own ordinances. So I'll turn this over to Liz, who will go through this item. This did go to the planning commission and was recommended for approval. And then certainly Matt's here to answer any questions you may have about how this might function or what you can expect for timing, things like that. Liz?
And then I'm going to turn it over to Nate, who has been so gracious to take another application, so.
Wow, what a gentleman.
Cameo appearance here.
What was that?
But I do insist, Liz, since Matt turned it over to you.
Want me to take it over?
No, I'll take it. This is one that Liz felt that I, even I can handle, so we will, we will see. My first step is trying to figure out how to get the dang thing to try that. All right. So Mayor and Councilmembers, the item in front of you right now is the north water treatment plant. This is a concept plan phase at this stage. How do I get to the next page? Liz?
It's his first day.
You know how to do it, don't worry.
You're wondering how it's going, it's not.
You're fired.
Yeah, it's not going very good.
This is awkward.
And now there's nothing there. I'm bailing on this.
What's that?
Hold on, I'm going to start over again.
You can always press the page down button.
No, but then my, my graphics were gone.
On your key mode? I don't know.
His voice.
I know, it's like the wizard behind the curtain.
I'm starting over. Look how everyone's trying to guide Nate on this.
I'm, I'm staying up.
If it makes you feel better, I did something dumb in front of my director today.
There's nothing, that's like a daily basis.
There's nothing like being told by, like, everyone in the audience how to like drive your presentation.
Alright.
Everyone's gone now, so it's just the million people online.
Build on the PDF version or on PowerPoint.
Do you want me to take over? I take over.
Mayor and Councilmembers, the item before you this evening is the north water treatment plant.
Have you heard of this before?
Sounds like Porky Pig.
That's all, folks.
So to help you out, the site location of the proposed north water treatment plant. You can see highlighted in red here are two parcels that the city currently owns, which is surrounded by property owned by Hazelton National Golf Club, across Hunter Mark Road from Chaska Commons, so this area would be Cub Foods, right here is a landmark, north of Pioneer Trail. As I mentioned earlier, we're at the concept phase, so pending approval tonight, we would move towards preliminary and then ultimately final, through the three-step process. Just a little background on this site, as Matt mentioned earlier, this is currently the, the location of the city of Chaska well number seven, which is an untreated supplemental well that is used, that is used for peak demand days currently. Well seven.
I wanna just clarify.
I just hit my groove, Matt.
I just wanna clarify, it's not that it's un, it, if, if it's used by people, it's properly, it's.
It meets MDH guidelines.
It meets all, all the standards. We don't wanna, we don't wanna, we don't want people freaking out that we're giving them bad water.
That's right, yeah. Thank you for your clarification.
It's not treated, it's not treated for iron and magnesiums and all that stuff.
We are meeting MDH standards, to be clear.
Filtered is the word you're using.
It's filtered, that's the word I'm looking for.
That's why he's here.
You wanna do this, Matt Hafner? Thinking we could maybe, I'm thinking we could maybe be done by midnight then. What do you think, Kelly? You wanna stay? Oh, I'm with you.
May I continue, Mayor?
Absolutely.
Alright, well number seven is becoming more critical. And so as, as demand continues to grow with the city's growth, we are looking to add a more consistent water supply to supplement what we already provide. So through doing some studies, it was determined that using the existing asset of well number seven to add that water treatment to our current water supply is the most cost-effective approach. Developer, Matt Hafner, has stated a number of goals along with this, with this site, to supplement the currently treated water supply with an additional source to ensure that residents have adequate and equitable access to safe and compliant drinking water. And then also with the building itself to fit respectfully into the neighboring community. Existing conditions on the site, it's about a half acre site, it's currently owned by the city. It is currently zoned open, which is really a holding zone, as you all know, that allows for the existing use to continue. What we would be looking for as a part of this is to rezone it to the P-two district, which is consistent with every other city-owned facility that is in the city. The current primary use, as I mentioned, is well seven pump house structure. There's also several electrical cabinets on there and we also lease a small tower to T-Mobile, I believe it's, is what the lease is for on that site. Yeah, it's, it's more of a small cell type facility, so it's not the, the large tall cell towers that you see other places.
I don't remember that.
You'll have to drive by and notice it. There is also on the north and east side and of the edge, there's a, there is a substantial earth berm that exists today, which we are looking to take advantage of through the development process of the site. Cutting the building into the berm to sort of lower as it relates to the Hazelton clubhouse and also then use that to increase the vegetation on there to provide some additional screening as it relates to Hazelton. So that current request is for the water treatment facility. It ranges in height from thirty-five feet to fifteen feet in height. And that's really based on what needs to happen inside the building, using gravity to, to pull the water through the treatment system. You need to have that height differential there. As I mentioned earlier, we'd be, we would be rezoning it to a P-two. The comp plan does guide this for public and semi-public use. So like I mentioned earlier, the, the comp plan does guide it for this sort of a use. I think what's good to note and just to understand is the context of the site around it is planned for mixed residential. And that's a strip that Hazelton does own, but they have expressed interest in, in the possibility of developing in the future. I don't think there's anything imminent there. And then also, the northeast corner of Hunter Mark and Pioneer Trail does have a concept plan approved for, for neighborhood commercial on that site that Hazelton went through that process probably about ten years ago. They have not pursued that development, but that concept plan does continue to stand available to them. To dive into the concept plan a little bit further, the building is approximately five thousand seven hundred square feet for the water treatment facility. The access that is proposed currently exists today for the wellhouse that is there. It would remain pretty similar except for adding this turnaround here. The intention is not to have staff permanently at this location, but they would come by on a daily basis. And so that would be enough to facilitate the vehicle for that staff member and then to allow them to turn around. The setbacks on the site, Hunter Mark Road has a hundred foot setback from the center line. From the north, south, east property lines, we'd be looking at a fifteen foot setback, which this does propose to meet. There is an exception on that center, on that center line setback from Hunter Mark, where the current wellhouse pump house structure is actually at ninety feet, five feet from the center line. That's due to where the placement of the well had to go for MDH guidelines at the time. And we wouldn't be looking to move that well, so there would be that, a little bit of an encroachment there. The building also may require some underground tanks that depending on the final design may end up going into that one hundred foot setback. But those would be underground, so they wouldn't be visible within that hundred foot setback. Utilities will utilize existing easement, so there is an easement that the city has going north out of this site to the sewer, existing sewer line that exists going through Hazelton. So we would utilize that. There may be some construction easements that are needed, so we'll be coordinating with Hazelton to do that. As far as trail and pit access goes, right now there is no existing pedestrian facility on the west side of, of Hazelton Boulevard, I'm sorry, Hunter Mark Road. There is a trail on the west side. So when, in the future, if this does develop as Hazelton has guided, the potential to do, we do wanna make sure that there could be a sidewalk facility here, so we'll make sure that's accountable, accounted for. I don't think the intention would be to build it at this point, so it would connect to anything.
That was gonna be one of the questions I had, so thanks.
Yep. Landscaping, there will be a full plan that would come in with the preliminary. And then stormwater, the size of this development is below what would trigger stormwater retention standards. And so we would be looking to just make sure that the grading doesn't impact negatively the surrounding property. There may be some opportunity to do things like native vegetation and things like that, also maybe capture a little bit of it on site. So some exteriors that are inspiring Mr. Hafner on his design for this building would be the existing shopping center right across the way and also our existing water treatment plant, which really follows a similar design approach to a lot of our city facilities. You think about the fire station, city hall, community center, a lot of them kind of follow that similar pattern. Chaska brick gabled roof, steel roof with that white metal accent to it. So a couple of different versions here of the concept plan in front of you. The building, like I said, is, is designed to, with the intention to align with existing city of Chaska public facilities, incorporating that three hundred and sixty degree architecture. The building, like I mentioned before, would look to take advantage of the site elevations to try and lower it in relationship to Hazelton. We have two different roofs here that we're proposing. One would be the red and one would be the gray. Mr. Hafner is seeking your input on whether you have a preference on red versus gray.
Gray.
Gray?
Red.
Red, alright.
I think red matches the other buildings.
Oh my gosh, what if someday we don't want it to be red? Red exists nowhere.
I, I think the, the gray blends into the rest of the buildings better.
And for a golf course, like, I think.
What about, go back to the. Interestingly, I did drive by on Pioneer Trail, on the, the north side of Pioneer Trail, if you're going by Hazelton, they have their maintenance facilities there. Some of them have a red roof, some of them have a gray roof.
Yep, they're mixed.
So there you go.
The big barns, gray.
Rock, paper, scissors. Gray.
But would you show the, the, the pictures of the neighboring buildings again? Yeah, because these are what's, you know, the, it could go either way on that, because the shopping center's kind of got this kind of beige tan roof.
See, that's what I was blending it more and, we don't, I mean, sometimes, I don't know how Matt Hafner feels, but sometimes maybe we don't need to advertise it as a water treatment plant. To me, I think we wanna blend it in as a commercial building, that nobody knows what it is, then make it be something that it really is. You know, I mean, where they build treatment plants in the residential neighborhoods, they make it look like a house. I think if, can you go back to the? I don't know, somehow if there's a way, even if you put in windows on that lower level to make it look like a commercial building.
Yeah, like faux windows of some sort.
I mean, even if they're blackened.
Yep.
But I mean, it doesn't have, every one of them doesn't, but I mean, just, it just blends in better and you don't have to. You know, in today's society, I don't know.
Chaska Commons has a gray roof.
Yep, so I would say, if, just go with whatever Chaska Commons has.
Well, I mean, you got all the crazy people in the world.
And I'm also wondering that the black section in the middle, just make it the same as the rest of it, so it's just kinda, I mean, it just, you wanna make it as nondescript as possible, right? So if it matches Chaska Commons, kinda blends in.
See, I think that gives it depth to make it blend in more.
I.
But, I mean, in the big scheme of things, I mean, make it, pull as many cues as you can from the neighboring buildings. That's where I'd be going.
You were zero help to you.
Does that get what you need, Hafner?
All I'll say is the Curling Center has a gray roof and the clubhouse at Hazelton has a gray roof.
It seems like you've made a.
I liked, I liked the gray roof actually better.
There's a reason I brought it, brought it up, so.
But I have one vote, so.
I was sort of joking with them.
Make it a condition of approval.
If anybody remembers when the, when the old, or the existing water treatment plant went up, there, the drawings that were shown for the building, the front of it coming out, the, in the front where the front doors are going all the way up to the top, they're gray up on top. And when the drawings were done, everybody thought that that was shading on the drawings. So then all of a sudden the building got built and it was gray and we're all looking at it, we're like, why is that gray? Were you approved gray? We're like, wasn't that shading?
Clarity.
The existing structure there right now has a red roof.
Yes.
Oh, the little, yeah.
Little windows now, yep.
I don't have an opinion.
And that's shading on this one there, because those are eaves, right?
I know, I drive by the, the one all the time, 'cause it's in my neighborhood. And it's really pleasing to the eye, so I mean, I'll lean on whatever you feel is best.
I mean, I'm not gonna fall, I'm kinda with you, I'm not gonna fall on a sword on this, but if you're asking my opinion, I like the lighter roof.
I'm still mad I wasn't here for the water tower, so I'm sticking to my gray roof.
I'm, I'm fine with a gray roof. I think the.
What's the matter with our choice we made?
'Cause I didn't get to give a speech on font, psychology, and I would've said capital letters.
Well, thank goodness you weren't here, that saves us another hour. Well, are we stuck here or what?
No, I think I'm, I think I'm hearing everybody say gray.
I'm hearing gray.
I'm hearing, I'm hearing gray.
John hasn't said anything yet either, so.
Surprise us.
Maybe one half red and the other half gray, like a composite.
Stripes.
I don't think anyone's like really hung up on red right now, so.
Well, but it, I mean.
Whatever, whatever you feel.
I just, I don't know, to me it just seems like it blends in with the building next. I, I think it should really just blend in and doesn't need to stand out.
I can tell you, if you remember the discussion on the Curling Center, one of the reasons that it was made gray instead of red was because we wanted it to blend in more with the commercial buildings downtown and not necessarily stand out completely as a city building. That same, I do think that that same theory sort of applies here, is that you're in a commercial district. This isn't a building where people are gonna go to, a city building that people are gonna go to. And, you know, the, the buildings where people actually go to in the city are pretty consistent. You know they're city buildings. This doesn't need to be. Yeah, it's, it's just not a building anybody's ever gonna visit, so.
So what if paint is less expensive?
That's actually a good idea.
No, you buy them those color, you don't paint them.
So you're saying whatever panels are less expensive.
You can build a pole barn.
I mean, I, I think about how Shakopee did that power distribution building. I mean, that just blends in like it's a commercial building. And I, I guess that, the, I, I, when I went and toured that and looked at that, even though all those windows were false, it still gives you that street appeal that it's a commercial building. Now, I don't wanna stick another five hundred thousand in it, but I mean, if there's a way that we can do some of those things on that part that has the big red roof between the two black sections, I think that that building would just blend in as a commercial building and nobody really knows the difference.
Mayor, were you thinking?
That's just my opinion.
Were you thinking Eagle Creek, the Eagle Creek Station?
Sure.
In Shakopee?
Sure. I don't know what.
I think he's thinking of an MMPA station.
Yes, the MMPA station.
Yeah.
Is it the same one we're talking about?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's called the.
What do they call it? It's not a, it's not a.
Whatever roof ends this conversation.
Exactly.
I can't remember exactly what it's called though.
I'm trying to remember which one it was. Was that the one in Hastings? That big one in Hastings?
No, he's thinking of the one that MMPA built over here.
Well, that was, that was proposed, that was gonna be modeled after one in Shakopee. Okay, yeah, that was modeled after Eagle Creek, yeah. No, I agree.
Alright, what do you got left, Nate?
Is that white car gonna be in front of it?
Can we make it red?
What do you got left, Nate?
That's the end.
Okay.
We need to adopt a resolution, I think.
We do need to adopt a resolution, assuming you approve of what Haker's proposing, yes.
Are there any questions regarding this project?
What color is the roof gonna be?
Matt, say it, gray.
Surprise you. In, in step two, I'll come back and surprise you.
So I, I do have, one question got answered, two I'm looking at. Do we have to shut this well down while we're doing that? If we have the, the tower down being painted at the same time, is that gonna cause any concerns?
Um, when the tower is getting painted, no, because we will not be constructing this when the tower's getting painted.
This, this would be summer of twenty-three.
Yeah, we're.
This says summer of twenty-two.
We'd, we'd like, we'd like to, but I don't, I don't see us moving that fast.
Okay, well, I just saw that number.
Yeah, I have to come back for preliminary and final and I, I'm pushing. I wanna go as fast as we can, but I think realistically.
Well, the city process is pretty slow.
Yeah.
This is rough.
Getting through councils pretty rough. Alright, um, okay, I mean, that, that was a question I have. If, I mean, I don't think there's anyone opposed to this and I don't mean to take this lightly, but we're kinda getting silly here. So, is there any other questions that really, you know, are pertaining to the, what, what we have a concern on? I, I think what I'm hearing is, is the trend is to lead to the gray roof. And, and then after that point, really how you finish it up. And this concept, we're gonna see the preliminary, we'll see what it looks like there and, and move forward. Like I said, this concept, I don't think we need to get too much deeper into this building, unless somebody else has got conversation they wanna see done on the building.
I'll just let you know that if you've driven by there recently, there is a well driller out there now. They're, they're drilling a test well and that's for that future well number ten, which will be just on the north side of this water treatment plant. So we will have ultimately two more wells that will feed into this plant and those two wells will equal what well seven concurrently put out for water. And so this well driller is drilling down to see what kind of water is available for this future well ten. And we're anticipating about half of the volume of well seven. And once we determine that, then we'll be able to move forward with the actual full development of well ten. And, um, once we determine that, then we'll be able to move forward with the actual full development of well ten. And then what the work they're doing now, we'll, uh, we'll convert that to a monitoring well and that, that'll be just for DNR record purposes, so.
Is well ten going to be right on Huntermark two?
It's going to be right on the north side of the water treatment plant, yep.
Oh, right there.
And then we'll have, uh, another well up, uh, on the southeast corner of the loop. It'll be the same as what well ten will be, uh, but we'll have another well.
Well, if we drill that well, do we have to add more property?
No, it's on, we have property designated for the well up there.
Oh, because this building looks like it's going to take all that, but.
The well buildings are pretty small though.
Yeah, it's going to be like, uh, at Sunset Park, there's a couple of wells, um, that are just to the, what would be the third base dugouts.
Yep.
They're right there, that's what this will be.
Pretty small.
Very small.
Um, and then what we're building is capable of handling all of that additional water?
What we're building will handle either well seven or the other two wells, not, not all at the same time. So it's, it, this will be a two and a half million gallon per day plant when it's fully operational. That's what well seven can put out or these other two. And, and we, we can't run them simultaneously, otherwise we'll be overflowing the filters, but it's, it's, it's designed to, to handle, um, what well seven can put out. These other two equal what well seven can put out.
So I'll ask the question, why wouldn't we build it big enough to handle for both or don't we need that?
Um, we don't need it, um, it would be added cost for this treatment plant. The next piece of water that we're going to talk about is just on the north side of two twelve on Old Victoria Drive. Those, there's going to be two more wells there that I'll come and talk to you in a year or two about. That's the next bit of water that'll go to the old treatment plant or the current treatment plant. So.
Yeah, I think.
Just a, a size, from the, the size of the building and it just, we feel that this is the best. When we take down well seven, we'll have two wells to basically, um, you know, bring in the same volume of water. We'll be able to, right now, we'll be able to, um, produce enough water out of the small treatment plant to, to satisfy the system, uh, in the winter months. So we can take down our big water treatment plant, do some significant maintenance in there if we need to. And it's, from an economic standpoint, we just felt this would be the best size and the best way to, best approach.
All right. All right, any other questions?
Just a comment, um, I think that, you know, once having this facility really, 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 uh, you know, great for maintenance and practical purposes, but I think that also from a resident perspective, you know, that once or twice a year when we actually do have to switch over and use this well, even though the water is coming out of it is filtered and does meet MDH guidelines, it's brown, it has high in iron and magnesium and residents do get very alarmed, like, why is my water brown? And I'm sure you get plenty of calls on that. And it'll be nice to be able to do that switch over and everything's transparent from a community perspective, not causing any undue alarm, even when it's scheduled maintenance, so.
Especially an issue with industrial customers, especially with food customers and some ones that have some pretty high, uh, quality. You know, they end up having to do more filtering than probably they want to.
Because it changes the quality of their product or the look of their product, yep, absolutely, so. I think that'll be, I mean, it'll be good for, you know, everybody, so I mean, for sure, so.
From an overall system standpoint, the geographic location of this is huge for, like Matt said, the, the industries. Uh, this water always wants to go north, because we're pushing water from the current water treatment plant, so all of that water tends to go north. And once this is treated, it'll, it'll definitely help, it'll help just the overall model of the, of the water system significantly once it's up.
Absolutely, and not have to get so many phone calls from residents.
Yeah, we haven't been, it, it hasn't been terrible, um, we were, we're very strategic when we run it. We, we only run it for a couple hours and it's in the, really the middle of the night when the irrigation is just, just ripping and the, and our old water, not old water treatment plant, our current water treatment plant is pedal to the metal, all, all the wells are fired up and, that's, that's the only time we're running this thing. And, and we went ac- actually like, I think, three or four years without even running it. We, we would run it just for a, a short period of time to make sure the pump is running, just to make sure that if we needed it in an emergency, it was there. But, uh, we went several years without it, but.
That's good.
Last year we had to run it.
Oh, yeah.
With the drought, so. Yep.
All right, anybody else got anything? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-six.
So moved.
Approving concept plan for the north treatment plant. So the motion by council member Wong?
Second.
Second by council member Hubbard. Again, twenty twenty-two dash forty-six, approving concept plan of the north water treatment plant, discussion. Hearing that all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. We're done with that. Bills, anyone got a bill?
Uh, three questions.
Thanks for being here, Matt, Matt?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, three quick questions, um.
Yeah, or Matt's leaving, so.
Matt, Matt, Matt. Um, so three quick questions, page four, there's one for, uh, Becker Arena Products, um, it's for the second forty-five percent of the Rink at Clover. Um, is, assuming that's for the rank board signings, correct?
Yeah, that was for the stuff that was on back order, uh, so they did get installed last week.
Oh, very cool.
Yep.
Nice. Um, page nine, um, Cummins, there was a motor repair, or it looks like it's, I mean, it was a pretty big motor repair.
Yeah, there was one year when we, so when we go look at our replacement truck schedules, there was two pickup trucks that we bought in a particular model year that have been particularly, uh, not great.
Oh.
And so we've had engine, uh, issues with them and so, um, anyway, something with, uh, they used urethra to deal with emission standards and it was one of the first years that they did it and it, it's, it was not working as well, so it showed up in.
Who was that bill with?
That was with, it was for Cummins, uh, for engine repair.
Oh.
Yep, so basically they're looking at using like the urea for the emissions, yeah, okay. And, but that was, that was the fir- first model year apparently, right?
Yeah, we only had two trucks that fell into that category, but both of them been issues.
Right.
Yeah.
It's always first, never buy first year if you can avoid it, but sometimes you have to, right? Um, and then the last question is page nineteen, um, for MTI Distributing, what is a real grinder? I tried to, I Googled it and it didn't come with a.
So first of all, MTI is basically a Toro dealership, so it's for.
Oh, it's for the.
It's for, it's for grinding.
Real mowers.
So the real mowers look, they look like, uh, the real mowers look like when you hand push, uh, a mower.
Yeah.
Uh, but they're on the inside of Green's mowers and so they have blades that go around in a cylinder and it's what basically sharpens the, the real blades.
You have to take them out and put them on a machine and they run that across and it sharpens them.
Okay, so it's a stealth sharpener for the mower itself, so it doesn't get.
For a particular type of mower, for just the real mowers.
Gotcha, okay, cool, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Motion by council member Wong?
Second.
Second by council member Hatfield, discussion. Police, we call the roll.
Council member Hatfield?
Yes.
Council member Hubbard?
Yes.
Council member Wong?
Aye.
Council member Grau?
Yes.
Aaron Linsch.
Yes. Uh, who's other business, council member Grau?
Um, the only thing I just want to bring to the attention, I don't, there's nothing really active, I know the city's probably paying attention. And I'm actually just reading the article about it because I want to get more information, but City Victoria had a proposal for kind of large gun range shooting complex that imposes kind of that southwest metro Chaska area. I started to hear, you know, similar to the concerns that Victoria residents had with noise and everything like that. Just want to put it on our radar, I seen head nods, I'm sure this is new.
We know about it.
Um, because I've had some residents, I've had some residents ask the question, because, um, you know, that sound is concerning. I mean, even now, uh, where they can hunt, because it's hunting area, sometimes, I mean, I'm not kidding, I've occasionally thought someone's been knocking on my front door and it's actually a gunshot from hunting, so, which is a certain time of season and a certain kind of process that as development happens, will get pushed further out, truthfully, but I just want to make sure that's on our radar, because it's just, you know.
Well, it's particular an issue too, because, you know, Marsh Lake Hunt, Hunt Club's out there now and for those of us who live in Clover Ridge, Town Course Heights area, you can definitely hear it. And that's miniscule compared to what they're talking about for a facility out here, so.
So, just wanted to raise that up and kind of keep her, I, I know I will.
Well, the whole thing is, is it's not, we have no control of it.
Understood, but I just would express that we continue to work with our counterparts in the city to influence as we can, because we may not have a say in it, but it is something that would, will impact the quality of living in Chaska.
Without a doubt.
There's, there's quite a few people in Victoria that are feeling the same way.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, that'll, it's kind of watching it too and.
Yep.
It's, it's interesting, but like I said, we don't have a lot of say, other than. So.
Um, other, I'll just, I guess I, one other thing to note, uh, Community Rec Advisory Board met, uh, had our kind of our kickoff meeting. There's been a little bit of a delay in meeting, they hired a new, uh, director and then they rehired another new director. Uh, so, uh, I think they're trying to get those kicked off, they're going to go to quarterly meetings versus, uh, they were doing monthly meetings. Uh, I think the biggest thing that I took away from this last meeting, uh, early last week was some of the budgetary stuff's coming back and to be better shape. Obviously, like a lot of stuff like that, COVID impacted, um, participation and numbers and everything like that and they actually, you know, made some significant cuts, which, uh, involved people, uh, unfortunately, but starting to get back to, to kind of pre-COVID levels of participation and that's definitely good to see. Uh, and then finally, just to be a complete homer and a fan, I'm just going to say go Timberwolves.
Oh, anybody hear a score yet?
No, it's tomorrow, it's being announced tomorrow.
I thought that you were saying tonight, it was on the news.
It is zero zero.
Yeah.
Wait, it's still zero zero.
Zero zero.
It's going to be zero zero for a while.
Well, I, I saw the beginning of the news and they were talking about the Wolves playing tonight. So I don't know, I don't pay any attention.
Seven thirty tomorrow, seven thirty tomorrow, and then it gets in the cities here next Thursday, Thursday and Saturday, so. Just like strange but odd time to be a Minnesota sports fan, to have two winter sports teams that are playing the playoffs and successful. The Wild, the Wild finished as well.
Really?
Yeah. What's their score right now?
Zero, zero.
I don't know, they, they played last night, they won last night, that's what they finished. So just being, taking a moment to be a complete homer, because it's, uh, I, I believe this, a lot of times the state tends to want, is just thirsty for a successful basketball team. We like their basketball and it's been hard, so, just a shout out to the Timberwolves, that's all I got. That's, I'm done.
Yep. Council member Wong?
Um, let's see, so just cover some events, um, May seventh, we got Jonathan's Spring Cleanup Day, um, which is out there, which is also the same day as Christmas in May, which we're really excited for that, they return back to its original regular date in the calendar, which is super awesome. Um, so I think that some of us will be out there volunteering as well. Uh, May eleventh, um, from five to nine at City Square Park, Taste of Chaska, so that's returning after a couple of, I guess.
They were last September.
So they did a kind of a, a late one, so kind of coming back to.
August. It was last fall.
It was last fall, yeah.
Yeah.
But coming back.
It was August.
Yeah.
Yeah, so coming back to its regular time this spring again. And then, uh, May thirteenth, I think this one was postponed for, it went kind of virtual, was the Chaska Bash, so, um, that'll be at the Chaska Event Center, it's a fundraiser for Chaska High School. So, uh, tickets are in, tickets are already on sale, so that'll be another good one. Um, and May fourteenth, the Jonathan Festival of Garage Sales is happening. And also in July twenty-ninth through thirty-first, River City Days, so it's like, the calendar's like filling up, it's really exciting to see all the stuff happening and, um, see things kind of returning back to their usual places in the calendar again. Also, congratulations to the Chaska Hawks' first robotics team for winning, um, first in the regionals and going to nationals, so we'll be well represented there. It's, I'm just an honor to go to nationals, so it's really, really super cool to hear about that. Um, also, congratulations to our new fire chief, uh, Stephen Kraus, um, and congratulations on the new position. Um, Southwest Transit, um, we're continuing interviews for the CEO position, so we're still trying to narrow down the pool, um, so we're working through that. And the last thing was the thing that, you know, kind of hurt in the Star Tribune, um, about Hy-Vee, which was disappointing that Hy-Vee's like, you know, choosing to salt land here in Chaska, but, um, you know, it's one of those things that sometimes with those, uh, changes comes other opportunities. You know, unfortunately, it's like no one asked or consulted us about, you know, staying or going.
Nobody even told us they weren't going.
I guess that's the sadder piece, is that they never even contacted us.
Yeah.
I, I just thought, and especially when we and Matt and I initially met with them, we questioned their motives. Were they buying this property to keep somebody else away?
Yeah.
And we don't do that, and that was their words, so.
Wow, sneaky, employee owned though, so.
Yeah, so I, I don't know if there was anything here, maybe, I mean, I would have thought they would have gone to a smaller building, they're saying they want to go to a bigger concept, I don't know.
Here's my sense of what happened is when Hy-Vee came into Twin Cities Market, Cup was sort of struggling and.
Maybe still, still struggling.
But I think, I think the market ended up being a lot tougher for them than they thought it was going to be when they came up. Uh, and they've changed their strategy, this will be the third time they've changed their strategy since they've come into Twin Cities Market, because they started sort of with like the Shakopee store and then they went to the, like, the small store and now they're going to the mega store. And so I think they're just having a really tough time figuring out the Twin Cities market.
Yeah, and I know that, you know, there's some residents who, who, for whatever reason, think that we choose which stores come to our town and that's not at all the case.
Or that we can move one store to that plot of land, it doesn't really work like that.
And, you know, it can in some ways be kind of nice if we did, but we don't have that power or, you know, the, you know, most we can do is give them a call and ask.
Well, I like the fact now that it's more buildable ready.
Yeah.
The site is.
Yeah, it's fully graded and it's got everything there.
Now, someone, if someone does try, decide to move in there, it's, they're a lot closer than they would have been last year, so.
So it's a much, much better, much more marketable site from that perspective, so. Uh, but yeah, so it's disappointing to hear, but, um, sometimes with, uh, changes comes new opportunity, so, so we shall see what it brings, but that is all I've got.
Right, council member Hubbard?
Uh, just a couple things, uh, the Chaska Community Center Task Force, the Citizens Task Force met this last week, kind of kicked it off. Um, got to meet the architectural firm and go over the, you know, just what's the expectations and meetings and things, have a little homework, but, so I guess more updates to come, but at this point, it feels really good to get the ball rolling and kind of start the discussion. Uh, and then outside of that, just a couple of events that, uh, council member Wong didn't touch on, um, Green Card Voice. So the Human Rights Commission is, um, doing the, celebrates immigrant voices this month. So part of that is, so at this point, at, at, right now, currently happening at the Community Center, uh, is the Green Card Voices exhibit. So there's these, uh, standees and my understanding, and I could be wrong, because I haven't had the opportunity to walk to every one of them, but they're like local residents, a lot of these folks that are on these banners and then you click and you get to hear their stories and stuff like that.
Well, and the ones coming for the program are local residents.
Yeah, so, um, so that's really unique and really fun, so, uh, there's, yeah, features over twenty Twin Cities immigrants, but my, my husband had said that a lot of them were local, anyways. Uh, and then there was a community screening this last Thursday, it was running at the same time as the task force, so I sat in on just like a tiny little bit of it. But it's, it was that through the iron curtain from Romania, so it was a, it, from a little bit that I heard, it seemed like a really nice discussion, there were some people in attendance. I did take some food and it was delicious. Then this upcoming Thursday here, the twenty-first, is another one, it's a Community Immigrant Voices panel. Um, and so that one is at the Chaska Community Center Theater and it's Thursday, the twenty-first, and it runs from seven to eight fifteen. So just wanted to put that out there and that's all I have.
You're up.
Um. Oh, thanks, thanks.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, there's a food distribution this Thursday at noon, um, same place, I believe. Uh, kind of an exciting thing, Coffee with a Cop, uh, on a Saturday, I guess that's been highly requested, so that's happening this Saturday at eight thirty AM at Red Bench Bakery. Highly recommend everything at that bakery. Um, and then the Community Center has a lot of fun walks coming up, Park Run this weekend and then some other ones, um, as well, so that's, those are on their Facebook. And then I also just wanted to thank the Chaska Police Department for all of their, um, speed control. I've been seeing them hiding on Stoughton a lot lately, greatly appreciate it, so. seeing them hiding on Stoughton a lot lately. Greatly appreciate it, so. Not hiding, I mean, or not Stoughton. It could, they could be anywhere.
They're so.
They're sitting out there blatantly. Definitely if you're a speeder, keep speeding there. Just kidding.
I always walk really slow when I go by Kelly because I don't know.
She just might stop you.
Pounces on.
But I just want to make sure that, I know I've complained about it before, but I have noticed also, yeah, I'll leave the other part out. But I have noticed that there seems to be, um, not that I doubted it before, but I have visually seen, um, speed patrols a lot more lately, I felt like. So thanks to them. And that's all I had. That hasn't been mentioned, so.
I do have one more thing. I apologize.
No, that's fine.
I would be doing Officer Duzan like a disservice if I didn't mention that I did do a police ride along with him last Monday as part of that last thing with the Citizens, like Police Academy. Um, and just to note kind of what Councilmember Hatfield was saying, you guys respond to a variety of calls. Like when I first showed up, he had just gotten done like putting out a kitchen, or yeah, it was kitchen fire. Um, and then, you know, just some of the other calls that he responded to while I was there with him. And it was good conversation and it was a nice ride along. But it's always nice to kind of see what's going on with the city and, and I thank him very much for his time and all of you all as well, so.
All right. Thanks. Lee?
I'll update.
Nate?
Just looked at my phone and the Timberwolves store is still.
Oh, boy. Thanks for the update.
Can you pull up on the screen here?
Maybe, yeah, we can.
That is the third time.
We're past. Bye. Jake?
How about the wild? Timberford.
You're good?
I'm good.
Matt?
I'm good. I got a few things real quick. Uh, just want to say thanks to the Legion Auxiliary. I thought the, the Easter egg hunt was probably as large as there's, has been in a lot of years. So, um, I thought even as cold as it was. So I just wanted to give a quick shout out to that. Two people that we really haven't really given kudos to. Um, one I want to mention is Andrew Romine, who was interim electrical director. We, we welcomed our, our new one. But I failed to mention this and I, I feel bad about this, about the job that Andrew's done filling in and all that time. So I, I, just a big shout out to Andrew. I mean,
Three years.
He, he took that over and really didn't skip a beat. And I, the, the thing is, is that we never noticed anything because it went that smoothly. So, um, Matt's probably, you, I, I don't know if you wanted to add anything, but I, I just.
I, I can't say enough about Andrew. Andrew is just a superstar and, I mean, he stepped into something that he didn't necessarily want, but he did it for the team and did a fantastic job. And I think he's glad that he's back to where he was before. But he, he, he was very willing to do it for the team and I really appreciate it.
Yeah, I, I mean, he, I, he, like I said, no one even saw that there was a change of the guard. And I think that's, that's what's really important about us having those people that can fill those spots in, so.
Yeah, and one other part of it is more importantly, I think it really gave, uh, Toby an opportunity to, um,
Heal, maybe. I don't know if that's right.
Well, no, but I, I mean, I, I don't know the right word for it, but it gave Toby, it, it gave Toby comfort and it gave him the ability to live his last days, uh, still being a part of the, of the team. And if it wouldn't have been for Andrew, that just wouldn't have happened.
Right. I'm, I'm just knowing Toby, he would have been worried about what was happening there.
Oh, yeah.
And that Andrew was able to take that piece of that and handle it with, with, with great, uh, success. So thank you, Andrew. And while we're talking about that, uh, congratulations to Steven. And now Kevin, here's another guy that stepped in and has taken over and most people again don't, Kevin, this Kevin Gravlin that has been interim chief and will be until Steven actually starts June?
June first.
June first. So, uh, Kevin will be there for, for the month of.
There's another one where Kevin is doing it for the team. He probably doesn't want to do it.
He, no, no.
But he, he said from the very beginning, what's most important is that, that we get through as a team together and I want to help and do what I can. And, and I just really appreciate that too.
So we've had like three new department heads in six months, right? We have names.
Well, in the last two years, we've had half our department heads are new.
Yeah, so.
With the police chief.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, and then just a couple of years before that, Marshall. And so it's, yeah.
But even since the last, um, retreat, we've had, was, has it been three or?
Four.
Four. Who's the fourth?
So you have P, Lee, well Nate moved over into community development and then, uh,
Kevin, or, uh, Steven?
Steven.
Yeah. So anyways, just a shout out to those guys for the great job that they've done and are continuing to do. So, um, Town Course is opening tomorrow, I think.
Not anymore.
Oh, they changed it?
They changed.
The Thursday?
They changed it to Wednesday, but I think Wednesday is supposed to be worse than tomorrow.
Supposed to rain all day.
Yeah, so I suspect it's going to be. Tomorrow's supposed to be cold.
But then Wednesday's warm but raining.
Yeah.
Because we live in Minnesota.
I suspect it's going to be Thursday.
Anyways, they're going to open up sometime this year.
Sometime this week.
They'll be here sometime.
So, um, also note, you'll notice that the water departments, uh, water, uh, hydrant flushing, um, starting this week. I've already saw them run around town.
Still zero, zero.
All right. Attaboy.
Who did that? I love him. He's so funny.
Probably get home before the game ends.
Are we doing those building open houses twenty-first and twenty-third?
Uh, oh, uh, of May. We're gonna, we, because the council work session,
You say May?
I thought I mentioned it last meeting, but because we moved the
It's in here.
It's April right now.
It's April, we moved.
It says April in there. Isn't it?
We originally have them set as April.
Well, it's currently April, that's all I know.
Oh, okay, you're right, you're right. So it's Thursday, May nineteenth and Saturday, May twenty-first. Okay. I just wanted to talk about those.
You better be there.
That we haven't really had those conversations about.
Yeah.
Um, as we move forward, looking at, um, our buildings and the shape that they're in, the crowding that's happening. Um, so we have open houses for public to see as we move forward. And our work session and the May fourth meeting is really a work session with, uh, a short council meeting attached to it. But it's, it's talking about what our next steps are.
It's primarily buildings that night. And we're going to be prepared to talk about not only sort of concepts that we've looked at, um, be able to show how sort of objectives that we wanted to accomplish are really working through the, uh, work with the architects and then also be able to get into preliminary pricing, uh, so we can get a good sense of, you know, if we're looking at this and looking at different plans, what type of financial impact would that have, uh, on people? The hope is, my hope is, is that, um, you know, we can share that with you guys. And then, um, you know, if you guys are looking and saying, yeah, this seems like this is something we want to continue to march forward with, then at that open house, not only can we sort of show people how things work now, but we'd also then show them, uh, at least conceptually, what we're looking at, uh, start talking about, um, uh, you know, how it meets some of the needs, uh, but even sort of start getting into, you know, what people can expect, you know. So it's, you know, it's hoping to have things sort of lined up in a row so that people, we can get more and more information out to peoples as we develop it.
Okay. All right. Uh, lastly, there are a whole bunch of, May, last year, we talked about all these different days. And so I just want to run on them real quick. Uh, actually today is National Linemen's Appreciation Day. And if that, that is a group that we as a city are certainly are, uh, appreciative of. So. What?
I didn't know that. I feel bad now.
You missed an opportunity.
Well, I'm sharing it with you. Still have time. It's not even midnight yet.
Send, send a needle out.
Right, Kelly? It's not midnight yet. I'll get through this real quick. Uh, May third is Armed Forces Day. Armed Forces Day, that doesn't sound right, but that's what my notes says. Uh, every May, May first through the seventh is Municipal Clerks Week. So that would be, uh, Denise, Denise's job. So, um, we'll have to remember that. National Police Week is every May, May eleventh through the seventeenth. Kelly, you knew that, right? Um, uh, May fourth, may the fourth be with you, is International Firefighters Day. National Teachers Appreciation Week is every year, the first full week of May, so May one through seven. National Nurses Week is every year, it starts May sixth through the twelfth. And then National Nurses Day is every year, May sixth. And I know we're not having a council meeting on the force, so I wanted to share these.
I thought we are having.
I'm going to add one.
Sure. Not enough for him to give his speech.
What?
Okay, well, then Happy Mother's Day as well. We're not going to be able to say words on that day.
No, that's valid.
You missed Mother's Day entirely.
I, I'm not there yet. Taylor Hubbard's birthday, May second.
You guys missed my birthday, but it's fine. Not a single one of you said happy birthday and I will.
I don't have a birthday, so. And Happy Mother's Day. What's the date on Mother's Day?
It's May eighth.
May eighth is Mother's Day. Happy opening fishing the following week or the same week. What else am I missing? May is a busy month with stuff. So make sure you send something out and recognize lineman tomorrow, even though a day late, dollar short. But, all right, last call. Uh, we are meeting, wait, May fourth, but it's going to be, uh, pay the bills, consent, and the rest will be, uh, a work session. But we're starting early though, five thirty.
We're meeting May fourth?
No.
I'm probably going to say Happy Mother's Day.
Go ahead.
No, it's May second.
May second, sorry.
Yeah.
Second meeting in May has it looking like, assuming it's going to be another busy.
Yeah, every planning meeting is going to be busy from here till we can see. Yeah, we'll, we'll at least have one busy.
Does Hatfield, do you have something to say?
I'm actually all set, but probably zero, zero is still on that score, so.
What happened to what you wanted to say?
I just, we were supposed to wish her happy birthday.